On the motion, those in favor. Motion is carried. And so now I'm moving on to item number three, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest. The general needs thereof. Oh, did we give Rebecca time to get going here? Mr. Uh.
I, I, I believe so. I'll ju- uh, maybe, uh, maybe Mr. Chair, if you just don't mind checking with the clerk to make sure she captured everything.
Are you okay?
Through the chair, it is recording, okay.
Sir, okay. Do you, did you get the meeting from the beginning?
I believe so. It, there was a bit of a delay, but well, I hope it's the best.
Okay, so I'm at item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general needs thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None by me.
Okay, so I'm at item number four, which is business arising from the previous committee meeting. Uh, and that is the meeting, I think, of February the fourth, which was budget meeting number five. And, uh, you know, those minutes were circulated in our package. Now, are there any questions or clarifications arising from those minutes? If not, I'm about to move on. Okay, so moving on then. And, uh, so the next item is item number five on the agenda, which is delegations and presentations. And we will have a presentation, uh, this evening from, uh, Donna Gladstone, the CEO of the Edwardsburg Cardinal Public Library Board. So, uh, welcome, uh, Mrs. Gladstone, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Uh, basically, you've got the, uh, floor here right now. Now, just so you know, we have some information in front of us, but it doesn't seem to have titles on it. So, uh, if you're gonna refer to the information that has been circulated to us, give us a second or so to, uh, get the right sheet in front of us.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I think this year I've been able to provide some better information than I did last year. And the first, uh, page that I prepared, um, is the information for 2021 budget meeting with council, which will list the, uh, comparisons of neighboring municipalities.
Okay, so that's page five of thirty-nine in our package.
Okay, and that's what I have too. So if, if that would be okay, if we could do the page numbers?
Okay, yeah.
So I've just, I've just done a, uh, summary of, of where we're at in, um, our municipality compared to those of our neighboring municipalities, which I, I think speaks for itself in terms of, um, the municipal budgets or the municipal grants for each of the, uh, each of the libraries. So if there's, uh, questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Godstow, or Mr. Bradley has a question?
Looking at that list, uh, Donna, uh, Edwardsburg has got thirty-three ninety-two per household and fourteen eighty-seven per capita. And we have, um, about seven thousand people roughly in the township. Prescott, which has about forty-two hundred in population, is getting significantly more per capita. Now, is there an explanation for that?
So the information is taken out off of the census and so that the, the, um, the per capita and per household is, is what's listed there and what, and, and the numbers that we've used. So Prescott specifically is a population of forty-two twenty-two and dwellings are twenty-one oh-three. Our, our dwellings or our, our per household is listed at thirty-one ten. So the numbers are probably a little skewed in, in that the census hasn't been done since two thousand sixteen.
But why would they be getting more per capita?
Well, remember, that's, if I can just jump in here, uh, just so Mr. Bradley understands, that it, the, that, these are, these are municipal grants. So it's strictly a decision of the, uh, of the municipal council, how much they're gonna allocate to their library board. These are not any kind of provincial grants that are, uh, that are allocated on the basis of, uh, population or households.
Okay.
It, it's a straight political decision at the municipal level.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, and, and just a note as well, um, of those libraries that are listed, uh, Edwardsburg Cardinal and North Grenville, of course, um, have multiple branches or, or more than one. Uh, Prescott and Augusta and Westport are all standalone in their, in their libraries. Um, I, I added the circulate on page six of thirty-nine. I, I added our circulation, our visits and our library cardholders, um, just for the past four years, just to give you an idea. And again, these, these numbers are with COVID having a, a substantial impact on our library usage. Um, are a little a, a little out of whack, but at the same time, we've, we, we provided the service that, um, that the patrons were looking for. And based on the provincial mandates that, that were given throughout COVID, you know, it's been very clear that libraries are a, a real, um, asset for mental health of, of community. So as soon as we got the word that we could offer curbside, uh, we jumped on it as well as, as soon as we got the word that we could reopen, we were ready to go. So our, our library visits, as you can see, um, were way down this year. That, so that's, the visits are actual in-person visits. And because we had no programming, um, the numbers were definitely down.
Uh, can I just interrupt there? Can I just interrupt you there for a second?
Sure.
Because if you're on page six of thirty-nine, I show that the library visits in branch are actually up, uh, twenty-twenty over twenty-nineteen.
Well.
Well, one is three thou- three thousand, the other is twelve thousand, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I missed a digit there. Okay, fair enough.
But at the same time, um, our library card, our, our folks that have come in to get library cards, uh, continues to grow. So, um, we had a number of folks phoning in asking to get library cards during our, uh, curbside and a number of folks that have come in since, um, that are new to the community. So, so a number of homes that have sold in our township, those folks are, are keen on, on being library patrons. So that's, we're very pleased about that. And as well, our, our overdrive numbers, um, increased also, which is our, our eBooks, our electronic, um, our electronic library. So we're, um, we're in good shape with that as well. So are there any questions on, on that page?
Excuse me. Okay, Councilor Dillball wants in here. Donna, where's your electronic books? I can't see it. The information.
The electronic books are listed in terms of numbers.
Uh, yes.
Uh, are listed on page nine of thirty-nine. They're, they're under electronic eBooks, the breakdown for circulation.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, so just a couple of questions here before we go on. You, uh, so you, you were available or, or open for curbside pickup, but, uh, di- did you record that data?
Yes, we did. Um, so our curbside numbers, um, on, back on page six, there's a note, uh, in regards to the curbside.
Yeah.
So we had two, two hundred and seventy-nine pickups. We're, we're continuing to offer that program because, um, folks are, are still using it. And, um, there are some people that are, are still not, um, comfortable coming into the branch with other folks. So, so that's been a really, um, it, it's not a difficult, uh, service to provide. Some folks go to our catalog and put holds on books. Um, and we have, we have folks that actually call and ask us to do up a, a bag of books for them. So, um, it's, it's been a really, uh, it's been a really good service that we've, we've been able to provide.
Okay, now, one other question that I wanna ask you before you go on. You, you referred to the number of, uh, new cardholders that you're getting i- in relation to new move-ins to the township. Are you, are you actually, uh, checking that? Uh, I'm just curious. The, the, am I to read from that that there are a lot of newcomers or a, a, a lot of the new holders are, uh, big percentages of our, our newcomers?
Um, based on, yes, based on, uh, the, the, the memberships that we have, we have, we have done in the, in twenty-twenty, um, they have, they have indicated that they are new, new to the area. So based on that, that's, and we've, we've not seen them before. So, I mean, I can't, I can't guarantee that they're, they're homeowners, they've purchased, purchased homes, uh, some have. I, I don't have the numbers of those that have, some have moved in and, and are renting, but, um, the mid, the, they're all new to the area, for sure.
Okay, thank you. So just one question before we go on now, uh, to Mr. Grant, is there any sign of Mr. Robertson?
Uh, as, as of right now, no. I, I keep on checking to see if he arrives at the door.
Okay, he's not arriving here.
Uh, he is not on the via Zoom at this time either.
Okay, so sorry for the interruption, but go ahead.
Um, and the next, uh, couple pages are, um, so page, page eight is our, our, um, where the money comes from and where the money goes. Um, this is, this, uh, because of COVID, we have not been able to do fundraising. So our donations have certainly been, been down. Um, we have, we, we are very fortunate to have two friends groups who continue to support us through, they have, they have paid for some additional programs that we've offered to community. Um, our scientists in the, in the school virtual programs have been a great success. And they have also, uh, purchased for each of the branches, the respective friends have, have purchased, um, what we call mobile, uh, checkouts, checkout cards. And essentially, we could, um, go to the door and check, uh, people's books out for them, uh, without them having to come into the branch. Um, again, it's a, it's a, with COVID and trying to, to be as safe and effective as, as we possibly can, um, that's also been a, a real, um, asset to us and, and is being used. Um, so I, I, I'm not sure if there's questions on those two charts.
Well, I can't, I can't distinguish the colors. So, uh, the, uh, as we go down the, uh, the, uh, the little ladder at the right-hand side of the top chart, the township would be the eighty-four percent.
Correct.
What's P L O G?
So that's the, uh, uh, the payment from the province.
That's two percent?
That's, uh, um, that would be the thirteen percent.
I don't even see a thirteen percent.
Your colors are eleven percent, I believe.
Eleven percent?
I believe.
Yeah, your colors are.
It's the orange.
Yeah, this is an orange.
I don't have oranges.
It's gray.
One for now?
No, no, I.
Sorry, are we, are we, uh, the top?
Whites.
Or the, the, or is it where the money goes?
Yeah, no, no, where the money comes from.
Okay.
So, wait, P L O G, you're saying is eleven percent?
It's on page seven, Mr. Grant.
He's on, he's, his is just different colors.
Yeah, sorry, are we, I'm sorry, my mistake, I, I should have asked, are we looking at the twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one?
Well, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-one, which, because that's what's on page seven.
Right, okay, sorry. So yes, the, uh, it's eleven percent.
Okay, and then S O L S, what's S O L S?
That's the, um, Southern Ontario Library, that's our connectivity grant.
That's two percent?
Yes.
And then there's donations, that's the one percent.
Correct.
And then what's library revenue? What would be your sources of library revenue?
So that would be our photocopying, our faxing, um, donation, uh, well, no, that's, that's, essentially, that's what that is, our photocopying, our faxing.
Okay.
We do make some.
And so on that same page, you have the proposed budget.
Yes.
So go ahead.
So, again, the, um, salaries and benefits is the sixty-seven percent. And I did make a, a note, um, on the last page that I, uh, page ten, that our, we have eighty years of staffing for the library. So I think that's something to, to make note of and the, uh, an indication of the dedication of the staff. Um, our collection and processing, which is our, our books and our, um, it, our E, our overdrive, which is our eBooks, and our, our system, our, our Jazzy system, which is our, our cataloging. So that's all part of the collections and processing. And that's twenty percent. Our programs are, show at zero, they're not a big, um, expense, because we do have our friends that do support us in, in that regard. Our audits and insurance are two and three percent, which is what they are. Uh, computer supplies and maintenance is our, um, our computers, uh, support, our IT that, um, look after our systems and our licenses for our, um, our, uh, Norton and, and whatnot. Our phone and internet are, are there and our building related is, is just our, our office supplies and our regular, um, everyday uh, book coverings and, and things that we need, uh, to run the, the library. Any questions on that?
I don't see anyone raising their hands. And I think, yeah, I think you could probably skip page eight, because that's just, uh, twenty-twenty from a look, a look from behind.
Yep.
And, uh, so maybe you might wanna go to page nine then.
So yeah, nine is just a breakdown of our hours, our normal year hours, and I've put a note about our twenty-twenty hours. Um, and then our circulation for twenty-twenty. This is all information that is, uh, we have to provide to the province in order for us to receive our, our provincial, uh, grant. And I, I was able to break it down by, by branch. And just a bit of a history for our, uh, library card, the number of cardholders.
Very good. And so now I think we're on page ten. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. No.
Excuse me, Donna?
Sure, yes.
We're not getting, uh, for the electronic, uh, eBooks. You have twenty, twenty, two thousand two hundred and ten last year. Do you have anything for twenty-nineteen roughly, or did you do it in twenty-nineteen?
Uh, yeah, we have, we did do it in twenty-nineteen. At twenty-nineteen, it was just, it was, um, twenty-eight eleven.
Okay. So it's actually down in twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the, the thing, I, just, um, a little, um, a little bit about the eBooks is, it's a consortium. So it's, it's libraries, um, from all over Canada, that's part of it. And so the books that are there are, are shared with sort of first come, first served. Um, so it's, some, sometimes getting a book is, takes a long time. So, but, but at, with, with that being said, although our numbers are down, which is kind of interesting, our, our users have, have went up by forty, so.
But you can see as everybody's users co-opters, unless the number of eBooks continues to increase across the entire system, the waits are gonna get longer.
Right, and, and they do, because there are some libraries that, uh, purchase, they're called advantage users, and they purchase books for their patrons. It's a very, it's very expensive to purchase books in addition to being, um, a member of, of the, so we, we don't, we not, we are not advantage holders. And at this point, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, it, it, the number of, of users just don't justify us putting more money into it.
Now, when you say you're not advantage users, what does that mean?
So we don't buy books specifically for our patrons. They are, the books that are there that we are, that we pay to be part of in the consortium are the books that they have available. Our, our physical print material, we buy, we buy, but our electronic books, we don't.
Okay, I got you. Okay, so, so you use the existing database from the consortium then?
Ex, yes, correct.
Okay, all right. So I guess we're on page ten?
So yeah, we're on page ten and, and just a little additional information, um, again, for, um, a comparison of, of our library and our neighbors. And, um, so we had seventy-one new cardholders this year and forty new overdrive users, which are the eBooks that we were just talking about. And again, just a, a note about the eighty, eighty years of staffing at the, um, at the library.
Now, is there a possibility that some of the new overdrive users are also new cardholders?
They have to have a library card in order for them to access the overdrive?
Okay, so the answer is yes. So we don't have a hundred and eleven new, it's somewhere higher than seventy-one or may, may not be, it's the forty, some of the forty may be embedded. Well, no, all of the forty have to be hu- cardholders, but they don't all have to be new cardholders.
Uh, then the, correct, correct. They could have, they could have decided to use overdrive during the, the lockdown period and had been existing cardholders, yes.
Okay, so now we're on page eleven. Now we're getting to the heart of the ask.
We are. So just the information that we just went through sort of, um, backs up what, uh, is here on the, the budget. Um, it makes things look a, a little different now that we've included the, uh, surpluses from previous years. So although we do have a surplus, we are bringing it down as, as best we can. And now that I've had a year into the library fully, um, I can see where things are, are moving. And so last year, we, the budget was reduced by fifteen thousand. Um, and I know it's hard to look at this and think that we need an increase. Um, however, I, you know, I'm also, I also feel that, um, at some point, if, if you look at the actual for twenty-twenty without the, the surplus, our deficit was in fact eleven thousand and some change, or ten thousand, ten thousand and ninety-two dollars. So, um, our, our reduction was fifteen. With that said, um, again, it, it's your decision to, uh, what you, what you choose to do. And we respect that and we appreciate it. Um, my concern is, you know, at some point, our surplus no longer is there and we have to potentially play catch-up. So, um, this is what we, this is what we've offered. And, um, I'd be happy to, to ask or to answer any questions or concerns.
Okay, so I'm gonna raise the first question, Donna. And I do remember last year, the discussion we had, uh, that resulted in the, in the fifteen thousand dollar reduction from twenty-nineteen. And, uh, the, the reason that, you, you'll recall the discussion was, we were concerned that, that there was a, an accumulating and an increasing, um, uh, carry forward and that the money wasn't being spent. So my question is, and I can see where, in your twenty-twenty actuals, well, I'm looking at your twenty-twenty actuals and, and you're actually, from what I see, you're showing a, a surplus at the end of twenty-twenty of twenty-three thousand eight ninety-eight, when I go down that, that column of twenty-twenty actuals. So there is a surplus there of twenty-three thousand eight ninety-eight. And you're showing us that there's, that there will still be a surplus of sixteen thousand, uh, at the end of twenty-twenty-one, according to your budget estimates. And my question is, why wouldn't you tell us, for the purposes of this presentation, that you were gonna spend an additional ten thousand dollars or even fifteen thousand dollars on, uh, on books and, and additions to the collection? We, we would have, you know, that would make it easier for us.
Yeah, well, and I, you're absolutely right. And I, in discussions, in the discussions we were having, um, at the beginning of, or in the middle of twenty-twenty, our actuals, my actuals and, and the budget were a lot closer than what they, they are now. Um, of course, that was, we didn't expect COVID. At the same time, you know, I was trying to be fair and, and look at things in, based on where we're at right now. And, um, not sure where we're gonna be in six months, if we're gonna be the same this year as we were last year with COVID. The, the issue with the books is that we can spend that money. We just, our, our issue is that we physically haven't been able to get out. And that's been the, that's been part of the surplus issue over the last few years, because, um, there was, the ordering wasn't, in two thousand and nineteen, because there was no C E O, ordering was held back. And last year, um, part of the ordering is done physically to go out and physically purchase books to look at them. All our ordering has been done through White Hot. Had I known that things were going to be what they were, I would have definitely upped everything. But it is what it is. And I mean, it does make it difficult for, for you folks. I don't suspect that. I mean, yeah. It, I could have fudged the numbers better and I didn't.
No, no, I'm not asking, not asking. Well, it's just that, it's just that we can see from your presentation that you're providing a, a service that's well accepted in the community. I mean, you've got the numbers to show it, you've got the circulation numbers to show it, et cetera. And, and you know, our, our interest in providing the grant is to see that service level used and used well. And a big part of that service is the actual physical collection. Uh, so you know, I mean, from my point of view, if you're spending your money on your collection, and I think you're, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your salaries and benefits and your salaries and benefits seem to be running pretty much very close to each other on a year by year basis. So it's not, it's all a lot or a big percentage or a different percentage or an increasing percentage is going to salaries and benefits. And so, you know, I'd just like to see more of it go to the, to the question, but I'm going to be quiet here now and let some of the others jump in here. Who's that, who's next to you?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilor Cameron.
Uh, I just want to bring everyone's attention also to that the donation for the actual 2020 is way, way down, seventy-five dollars as opposed to, as opposed to, to higher in pre, in previous years. And also too, let's not forget that the library can at any time start purchasing ebooks if they so desire. That, that, that can also be done. And as the CEO said, the, to purchase the ebooks, it's much, much, very, very expensive, uh, much more expensive than buying hard copies as, as what we do now. And with the, with the added increase in the ebooks, this may very well in two thousand and twenty-one be a, a very compatible situation to, to do and purchase those books. And on the expense side too, remember, you never know when a computer is going to go down and when a computer is going to need, need to be replaced. And so, so I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that by going back to the one oh five grant, if, I, I think it's quite adjusted.
Other speakers spoken like a true member of the library board. Other, other members want to jump in here?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll support your comment, Mr. Mayor, that maybe some of the sixteen thousand projected surplus should be spent on collections, expanding the collection side of the library. But I would like to know, Donna, if you looked at this list of expenditures, and from your perspective, where is the highest risk in being off budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the last part of your question.
Where's the highest risk to you as the manager of being off the budget? In other words, being wrong in terms of your estimate.
Well, um, the, the collect, the, the collection, I, because I did reduce it, but also the, um, the training, the staff training and the programming. Because our, our training, our training, we have to train our, our staff. And our programming is, although it's virtual and will probably continue to be, that's how we get our young people involved. And they're not able to be as involved in the library as they were because physically they're not coming in and they're not using the computers the way they were. So our programming is, is where I would say we, we may very well fall, fall short.
So in your view, would it be prudent to take some of the surplus and put it into the training and the programming side of the business?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Except for what, the way I heard you describing it, you thought you'd be not spending what you've got budgeted, not overspending.
Not overspending on our books because we're physically not able to go out and purchase. So we have to rely on our vendors. But going over in our, in other areas, yes, there's, there's definitely, because I was, I was very, you have to understand too, that the budget, I, I, I asked some questions this year and, and got some answers after I had tried to be very conservative with the budget. And again, like I said, I had thought we were, our, our surplus had shortened and it hadn't. So had, had I known now, I, I certainly would have upped in those areas in the numbers.
Yeah, because that twenty-three eight ninety-eight, this, the surplus for 2020 carries right up to revenue to the prior year surplus carried forward on the twenty-twenty-one budget call.
Yeah.
It was right up there.
Yes.
Yeah. And then still at the end of the year, you show a sixteen thousand dollar surplus.
Yes. And, and certainly we're not going to have the, the, again, the fundraising. So I mean, not that there's a lot there, but we're not going to have extra, extra anywhere. So.
Other questions here, folks? Your key is, the key is the budget ask, which is a hundred and five thousand five hundred compared to last year, which was ninety. That's the whole issue with problems right now. Counselor Hunter.
I don't have too much problem with budget, Donna. One thing I, I'd like a little bit of clarification on in your comparison with Edensburg with Prescott and Augusta are total expenses that we have for your budget compared to theirs. Our budget shows lower, but in your budget, there's no money dedicated for capital for their, their, is their budget on their separate library as the best. And then is their budget, is their capital included in that budget?
No. Yeah, it's strictly the, the, the numbers that I took were strictly the, the grants for the operating.
Any, I need other comments around the table here. Counselor Gilbaum.
I'm, uh, I like the Edwardburg Federal per capita. Donna, I like your staffing, one point six nine. I, I agree with Mr. Bradley, maybe with your budget. This year, you could increase more money in your train. Uh, I don't have a problem with the hundred and five thousand. That's my ticket to town. But I would like to see maybe an increase if we have the people there. Can you zoom with them even if we're back to get the police training? Have Zoom meetings? Is that possible?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is it possible that you can have your, the training for the number of people you're seeing that can't come into the library, use your computers and so on? Is it possible that you could come up with some kind of training program under the Zoom where you can work and get them ready when the, when the library opens?
Uh, yeah, for sure. There's, we're, we're open to, to anything and everything, whatever we can, we can provide for staff or patrons, we're, we're doing.
I don't have a problem. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Grant. I see Mr. Robertson, is he, is he live on there or has he joined the Zoom? Waiting to get in?
Yes, Mr. Chair, he is live. Unfortunately, with the procedural bylaw, now that the emergency declaration is over, all committee members that are, that are voting have to be in person to participate.
No, no, but he can monitor, he can, he can, uh, he can attend the meeting without actually voting.
He can't participate.
Okay, fair enough. But yeah. So, so I believe, I, I believe he can hear. Can you hear us, Mr. Robertson? Not answering.
He's got something muted. He's muted somewhere. See a little red thing at the bottom.
So, Mr. Robertson, we just noticed that you're here. And we think that you can hear us, but we don't know that. But you're, you appear to be muted.
There, I've got it now.
Okay, fair enough. And you understood the instructions from Mr. Grant?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed what you said, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I lost Mr. Grant to review the protocol here now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given that the, the emergency declaration has, has ended, all committee and council members need to attend in person in order to participate in, in the meeting and, and vote. So I, I believe that those, those emails were, were sent out to, to advise all members. Unfortunately, certainly he can, he can listen, but unfortunately can't participate.
Okay, so I just, we, we just wanted to clarify that, Mr. Robertson, but certainly you're more than welcome to monitor the meeting. But glad to have you.
I'm doing that, so thank you.
Okay, all right. So now, question here, the issue on the table is the ask. The ask here is for a hundred and five thousand five hundred compared with the ninety thousand last year. Committee prepared to make the, do you have any more questions or you're prepared to make the decision?
Can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Donna, through the chair to Donna, uh, great job at the library this year, Donna, to you and the staff and the board. You know, continuing to provide a good service through, through difficult and trying here. Good re, good respect placed on the budget and turned out another surplus. So I think that's to be commended. You know, I'll, the budget looks good the way that it is and I'll support the hundred and five as it's there. So.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, I'm, I'm about to wind this up. So I think, Donna, there's consensus and I'm just going to just get everybody to give me, to give me a nod or show of hands. Uh, but the one thing that I'm hoping for is that when we're back here again next year, that the, the surplus is drastically reduced from the sixteen that you're showing. And if, you know, I can, I can see a holding five or so back, but make it easier for us and add to your collection somehow.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a consensus around the table for the fifteen five? Okay, so we have consensus there and that's the number that we have got. You know, the next draft of the budget. Thank you very much for appearing here tonight. And thank you very much for your contribution over the year. And good luck and, and as well, would you express our congratulations to your staff?
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. There is a, a briefing note with this one, uh, which was on page twelve of, of thirty-nine. And so I'm at item number six A on the agenda, which deals with that briefing note. It's the twenty-twenty-one draft every board budget. And there's no actual recommendation, but I think we've already dealt with all of the issues on the table. So I'm going to say that that's behind us. And I'm going to move on then to item number six B. So before I move on to item number six B, which is, starts on page fourteen of thirty-nine, I just want to, uh, for one second, refer members of the committee to page thirty-eight of thirty-nine, so that everybody understands exactly where we are here tonight. And on page thirty-eight of thirty-nine, get it in front of me here in a minute, on page eight of thirty-nine, thirty-eight of thirty-nine, I just bring your attention to the last paragraph on the page. After budget number four revisions, the overall twenty-twenty-one draft budget deficit is three hundred and sixteen thousand zero seventy-nine, which equates to a five point three five percent tax levy increase. If committee agrees with the changes that are suggested as we go through here, the overall decrease to taxation-supported revenue will be a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and would reduce the budget deficit to a hundred and fifty-three thousand five seventy-nine or a two point six percent tax levy increase. I just want to set that up so that you know that unless we make changes as we go through this discussion of the next few action items, we will be looking at a two point six percent tax levy increase. So with those few words, I'm not.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, but I, I just, uh, the item seven A, that does, that does have some other associated costs other than the grant. And I just didn't know if, if there was any discussion on those. Seven A, yes, on, on page thirteen, thirty-nine.
Twelve and fifteen.
Twelve, twelve and thirteen. What were the other issue?
I'm just saying that, that there's some, there, there's the library board grant, which, which was discussed. And it appears that committee is willing to near the one hundred and five thousand five hundred, but there are utility costs, building repairs.
Oh, right. Thank you very much.
That's all, that's all.
And we skipped that.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, okay. So thank you very much for bringing me back there. So then we're on, really, what we're on is page thirteen of thirty-nine. Okay, so there are others to cost the running library, uh, which they're showing utilities budgeted at twelve thousand compared to nine thousand six hundred spent. Uh, building repairs of twenty-two compared with twelve thousand spent, there's a few dollars there. Custodian wages, seven thousand two hundred compared to seven thousand two hundred spent. Water testing, two fifty compared to one twenty. And then the grant we've already decided. So is there any appetite to adjust anything on this page? Knowing what I just reported a few minutes ago. Mr. Bradley?
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The only is a question for my own information. Primarily, and it's eighty-nine, five, two, zero, three, library building repairs. Now, in twenty-twenty, we spent twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, we're budgeting fifteen thousand. My question is, how do we estimate this? I mean, do we walk around the building and have a look and say, well, that needs to be fixed and that needs to be fixed and so on? And then draft a kind of a budget based on that kind of a thing? Or is it just, you know, a five-year average sort of?
So through the chair to Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's a combination of, of, of five-year average and, and building assessment. The twenty-two thousand budget in twenty-twenty and realize that there was only close to thirteen thousand spent, but there was about nine thousand, I believe, budgeted there for ramp, the, the ramp repair that didn't, that, that didn't end up happening. And it was, we, we will certainly look at that. Again, we, we anticipate that it can last in, again, in twenty-twenty-one, but it will probably, it's, it's getting up in, in that ten thousand dollar mark and probably should be a capital item for consideration. And it will look to return in, in twenty-twenty-two as, as a capital item.
Let me recall, it's a wooden bench.
It, no, it is, it is a cement ramp with interlocking. It's, it's not the cardinal library.
Pre-stressed slats?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so the, the nine that was estimated within the twenty-two last year is not being brought forward inside the fifteen this year.
That is correct.
Okay, so Mr. Bradley, I guess the answer to your question is it's a combination of building assessment and five-year averages.
So, so do we have? So, so do we have, uh, room to maneuver, I guess, in that number?
Well.
I, I, I will defer to the, to the manager of facilities recreation, but I, I, I'm fairly confident that, uh, that, that, that number is, it is a good number.
Okay, Councilor Cameron.
I believe in the, uh, twelve, thirteen thousand, uh, for the twenty twenty act. I believe there was, uh, uh, lighting and security, uh, things. Is that included in that thirteen thousand? Which will never appear again.
Through the chair, to, uh, to him, I guess that is correct, uh, also, um, we have the lock change at both facilities.
Correct.
So that they are all a key to light now, so the librarians, uh, don't have to have separate keys or staff. But I'm not my facility operators. They just go into the, into either facility with one set of keys home. So that was done in November as well.
Correct, so, so those, those items that are in that twelve thousand.
Yes.
Will not appear in twenty twenty-one.
They're non-recurring.
In twenty twenty-one, you're absolutely correct. So perhaps we can knock that, uh, fifteen thousand dollars down to ten thousand.
Well, even five thousand is.
Five, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it from the point of view of the, of the, of the note on that page thirty-eight. Five thousand here, five thousand there, pretty soon you're talking real money. But pretty soon you're talking one percent.
So, through, through the chair, I just, I, 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 I would caution that you, you just approved a, a grant. Uh, an increase in the grant of fifteen thousand that's showing sixteen thousand surplus. So you're looking at, at cutting the building repairs down for fifteen thousand for a year to keep two buildings, uh, um, operational to provide those services that, uh, uh, you know, committee and, and, and council so desperately want to see happen and expand.
Mr. Grant, are you, are you, are you, are you suggesting that we're inconsistent?
I, I, I certainly would, it would appear so in, in.
From where you're sitting.
And, and, and also in Spencerville, Brian, I believe, got a new furnace as well.
What was the new furnace included in the twelve nine?
Uh, we can't, we, we, one, one, one thing with building repairs is they, 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 they continue to happen.
Yeah, but they don't recur, the same things don't recur.
Don't say that.
It's not, it's not, so, I, I, I believe that the, uh, the treasurer or the, uh, uh, facilities manager probably want to pipe in.
Okay, Chair recognizes the treasurer, please.
Certainly, so, um, I wanted to also provide committee with some, uh, details specific to that building repairs line. It's not just repairs to the building, it's things like brass cutting, it's snow plowing, um, it's, um, basic, um, cleaning, uh, items that need, the custodian needs to use to clean, uh, so if there's like a carpet cleaning, um, you know, and we've had those asked from the library, um, in past. So, uh, we really need to maintain, uh, a decent amount of money in there. We, we reduced it to try to offset the increase that the library board, uh, was asking, just so that we weren't overtaxing. Um, for that specific, uh, service. But, uh, I would caution going under fifteen, because even though there were some twenty twenties, I don't believe the, uh, furnace, uh, in Spencerville was done in twenty twenty, I think it was done in twenty nineteen.
Okay, could, could I make a suggestion then, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, the word "end maintenance" be added to the computer system to avoid this questioning next year?
I suppose there's only so many characters per line.
Well, abbreviate them, I mean, the thing is, if it was maintenance, if I'm looking at repairs.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating breakdowns and so on.
Yeah.
Maintenance is gonna be ongoing all the time, no matter what, I think. We've spent fifteen minutes talking about something, I would never have brought it up if that word was.
Yeah, no, I understand your point. Is there a, is there a reason that the word couldn't be added? Or do you want repairs, maintenance, repair slash maintenance?
Certainly, if that makes it clear for the committee that this is, uh, what it is, we've, we've had this discussion before, for sure. Um, we can certainly add, uh, some abbreviation for maintenance if it makes some clarity.
Well, as, as Mr. Bradley points out, it's a, okay, so the chair is looking for direction here. Uh, am I sensing then that as a result of the discussion, uh, we're prepared to, uh, well, I need to hear what yourself talk to me, I haven't heard anything from you. I, I need some direction, Chair, for direction here. He's lost and wandering, Mr. Hunter, or Councilor Hunter.
It's up to as it is.
Leave it as it is, do I get a nodding of heads around now?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I'm getting a nodding of heads, leave it as it is. All right, so now we're on, uh, back to six, six B, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go, um, back to, I'd like to, some clarification on, on, on page, uh, thirty-eight. This is for the library, uh, draft protective service budget, the building bylaw section, right? Of two point six zero, we are coming back to. What was your major premise here, you're back to page thirty-eight of thirty-nine? Right, and we do this and it's a two point six tax levy increase. Yes? That's for what we're budgeting tonight, the recreation department, that, the, uh. No, the library board is set, is that right? So if I could have some clarification from the treasurer, please, as I read the briefing note on page thirty-eight of thirty-nine. Uh, the, the briefing note says, after budget four revisions, the overall draft budget deficit is three sixteen. Which equates to five point three five tax levy increase. So that's not recreation, that's the overall operational budget, is it not?
Through the chair, yes, that is the, the, you're the, you're correct in your assumption. So after budget number four, we did make some revisions. Uh, in budget number four, committee had changed, um, some, uh, a revenue line as well as a capital line in landfill. So I've made those revisions. Um, and the budgets that are in, uh, in front of committee today are included in that overall budget. So that's where we stand as a, as an amount, uh, in the overall. It, it's not just to these specific budgets that are, that, that last page is talking about.
Right, good. All right, so as we go along here, as we go along here, the staff is giving us recommendations. Which will reduce the three sixteen deficit that we're looking at as we start the meeting. Will reduce that three sixteen deficit to a hundred and sixty-two five. They're giving us some recommendation to do that. But that still leaves it at a hundred and sixty-two five. With a budget deficit of a hundred and fifty-three, there's some grant money sitting there someplace. Or a two point six percent tax levy increase. Okay, so now I'm on page, uh, where am I, I'm on page twelve, am I not? No.
Fourteen. Fourteen.
Fourteen, yes, I'm on page fourteen, draft protect service budget. There is a recommendation, committee recommends the council, direct staff include twenty twenty-one, their protective services budget estimates. Into the overall draft estimate, now, you can see from, uh, page, page fifteen. I got it right? Yes, I got, I got fifteen right. Uh, the ask here is for showing your estimate, re- revenue estimates of five thousand seven hundred. Animal control expenses of twenty thousand, so a net revenue, a net animal control cost of fourteen five. And then livestock losses, a net cost of one thousand. So are we prepared to discuss this sheet on page fifteen? Discussion, I'm not hearing you.
I'll move that up a bit.
I have somebody moving, the, uh, Deputy Mayor moving the recommendation. And are you seconding the recommendation?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, sorry. Okay, now, we do, that's, those are the numbers that are going forward, any further discussion? Those in favor? Carry. All right, now, I think I'm on page sixteen. Which is the building department. Hard to work, two-sided page. Draft building department, and, uh, Give me a minute to thought up here. All right, now, so the draft building department. Shows us what? What are we seeing here? Transfer from reserves of three nine, three nine. And that's assuming that we can generate the revenue that's shown as a hundred thousand. And we're showing anticipated revenue for twenty twenty of a hundred and one. Now, my first question to the treasurer is how accurate is your hundred and one for this year's actual revenue?
Uh, through the chair, um, I do believe that there was an adjustment made just recently today. Um, the tax clerk was advised that there was a twenty twenty permit that was going to be canceled. I think it was of minor nature, but I, I don't have that number to, uh, to solidify at this point. Um, with this budget, I will be bringing back, um, the, uh, either surplus or deficit. I think it's a surplus at twenty twenty for sure. Um, back to council or to committee for, uh, the transfer into reserves. I'll know that after audit in, uh, the first week of March. Um, but there will be a, there will be a, a surplus to go into that, which is actually pretty good, because we have had budgeted to transfer out in twenty twenty. Um, and the reason, the main reason for most of the changes is that, that we did have more revenue than we anticipated. Um, there was certainly a lot of activity in the building department. Um, and there was a lot of costs not utilized. And then basically the pandemic did a lot of that, no training, you know, no traveling, a lot of that stuff. Uh, we didn't use a, a registered code agent, agent is for, um, an outside inspector to do some inspections when our CBO is off, off on vacation, and we didn't require that, so that helped our surplus situation in twenty twenty.
Okay, now, just one question before we move on, um, the, the permit that was issued in twenty twenty that's about to be canceled. We, at some point during the year, we passed a, a new, uh, a new, uh, bylaw for fees where if you, uh, if we issue the permit, we're gonna retain, and you cancel it or want it canceled, you don't get all of your money back.
Um, this permit was, would have been grandfathered back in twenty twenty before we passed that bylaw in twenty-one.
So we're gonna lose that revenue.
We are losing that revenue, yes. But from what I understand, the, um, owner is selling the property and a new, uh, owner is actually going to take out a permit. But we had to cancel this permit, uh, in twenty twenty and we will reissue in twenty twenty-one.
So the effects are twenty twenty, uh, surplus.
It does.
Yeah.
Has no impact on the tax levy though.
Okay, now, one other thing, uh, and that is that at the present time, uh, we'll have us, the, the, and I'm, I'm, I'm on page sixteen. Under financial considerations, the twenty twenty years of the actuals indicate a small pre-audit surplus of four thousand. So the very fact that we have some sort of a surplus will preclude us taking anything from reserves in twenty twenty, am I correct in that?
Uh, no, our surplus, our reserve right now is actually in a negative. Before we started the year, our, our, uh, the building surplus, uh, was actually in a negative of six thousand. Just over six thousand dollars.
So will reduce its negativity?
We will reduce its negativity, yes.
But we're still showing next year to transfer around three thousand nine hundred from that reserve to make things balance, right?
Yes, at this point, uh, I mean, we're being conservative in our, in our revenue, uh, lines. Um, and I, and I, I'm from the CBO, I think that, uh, you know, we, we will probably see more. We've already seen a great upstart to building permit, uh, issues already in the first two months, or month and a, month and a half of just twenty twenty-one. So, um, as I said, in the, uh, uh, information or action item, this particular budget has no impact to the tax levy. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's self-supportive.
Right, and because of that fact, I'm gonna go directly to the recommendation. Uh, because it's, it's self-financing and, uh, it's, it's self-financing through the pushing of the reserve account. I'm gonna go directly to the recommendation, do I have a mover and a secondary for the recommendation? I have, you're under moving, I have, well, I had the Councilor Cameron looking in here. Councilor Cameron seconding, gonna call the question, those in favor, motion is carried. And so that gets me past page seventeen, now I'm on page eighteen, which is the draft bylaw budget.
Mr. Mayor. I was on mute there, I'm sorry. Uh, I had a question on, and I brought it up at the last meeting. The building permit on the second line down, under two thousand and twenty, shows a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. And if you recall, the building permit schedule that was added to the, to last, uh, to the last meeting was a hundred and thirteen thousand. Now, would, would there been some reason that that's showing twelve thousand dollars difference?
So, through the chair.
Sorry. Certainly, th- through the chair, actually, after that meeting, um, I did investigate the, uh, the GL account to find out what has impacted. And what, what actually has happened is it hasn't anything to do with twenty twenties, uh, revenue. It has to, has to do with a write-off of a, of a permit of, of twelve thousand dollar permit. That, um, that was taken out by Logistec and, and verse canceled.
Oh, okay, and, and the other money back. Okay.
Well, we, we never actually, they never gave us the money, that we just logged that as a, uh, as a twenty-nine, nineteen permit. And then it, it, they, they never proceeded with that.
Okay, I got you. All right, so I'm, I'm back on, uh, where am I here, I'm back on six D, which is the draft bylaw budget. Which is page, starting on page eighteen of thirty-nine. So it's eight, pages eighteen and nineteen, and, uh, I, 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 I just wanna jump in here quick, I'm really disappointed, because I was hoping that we would have a, a more robust, uh, bylaw enforcement department next year, I'm totally frustrated with trying to get some of our bylaws enforced. Uh, but there's no increase here, so, uh, we're still showing, what are we showing? Bylaw enforcement fines, but salaries, we're still showing, what is this, seven thousand nine hundred? As salaries, is it, is it a salary or is it contract? Well, it's a contract of twenty thousand five hundred, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so that contract is still for the ten hours a week, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so, discussion here, if any? No, I'm hearing no discussion, no questions.
Mr. Mayor, we have a, a thirty-five hundred in legal and I don't know, we spent seven hundred and seventy, I don't. You know, there's probably a lot of activity that potentially could result in legal activity, but, um.
Now, we're showing, we're, we're showing, actually, we showed four thousand six hundred from bylaw enforcement fines. Was that actually received in, uh, in twenty twenty, or are those fines levied that are not yet collected?
Uh, that, through the chair, that's actually received monies.
Okay, so that's received money, and you're showing a reduction to three thousand, and I can understand that, because the courts have not been active through all, most of twenty twenty. And we know that an awful lot of the fines which have been issued are probably not going to end in convictions, so. I think that was a prudent move on your part, I'll say that. Um, I see there's no money coming from cannabis legalization fund, didn't get anything in twenty twenty either. Budgeted ten, gotten nothing.
Yeah.
Which is turning out to be the flop of the century, if I guess, if I could call it that. So how about the, we can't really argue with the draft revenue budget, there's very little in the draft. So how about the, we can't really argue with the draft revenue budget, there's very little in the draft revenue budget. What about the expense budget? Is any, is there any appetite to do anything with the expense budget? Which shows a net net bylaw cost of thirty eight thousand. Anybody?
Mister Mayor, I just a question, bylaw contract, twenty thousand five hundred, and then we have the salaries of seven thousand nine hundred and five.
Yes?
What's?
Okay, the salaries relates to the manager's position, if I if I understand it correctly?
Like Rebecca picking up the.
Right, yes.
Slow part, okay, good, thank you.
So that's that's a a portion of her salary that's allocated to this budget.
That's right, correct.
Okay, any discussion here?
Yeah, so if I can, picking up on something that that you said before about in the, actually, an increase. In. The ability to to have a bylaw officer. Like, are you looking, are you thinking, you know, adding, that you'd like to add ten more hours? Are you thinking that you'd like to add twenty more hours? What? I'd like to hear a little bit more thought about it, because I certainly would support something that that added a few more hours.
Well, the only problem is, I I. As as much as I would like to see an additional five or ten hours a week. And I'm and I know that we're probably getting more than the ten hours a week from our individual contractor. I I I think in some ways he's very diligent and perhaps provides us a little bit more than the contract calls for. But I I'm reluctant to to recommend anything at this point because I'm heavily influenced by the by the briefing note that I read on page thirty eight. I'm not gonna recommend increases here tonight, that's for sure. I'm not really happy about looking at a two point six five percent tax rate increase. So I have to suffer the same as everybody else, I'll be the first to, I'll be the first to take the bullet. So anybody else making any comments here? Not hearing anybody, so Luisa, and I don't see a recommendation in front of me. These are the numbers that will go forward. These are the numbers that will go forward to the next draft of the budget then. And so now I'm moving to page twenty. And page twenty is the draft fire department budget. And the chief is here tonight, so we have to be nice to the chief, but maybe not that nice. So we're, we have a a number of issues here. And the chief has given us his budgets on page twenty two, twenty three. Twenty two and twenty three, which we read those in conjunction with the briefing notes on page twenty and twenty one. So, operating budget, the overall, and I'm on page twenty. The overall operating budget has increased by five point eight seven percent or thirty two thousand three twenty two, mainly due to. Increase in automatic aid costs paid to the town of Prescott, approximately fifteen thousand, we're all there for that discussion. Addition of a vehicle loan payment of ten thousand for a new truck to replace truck eight, which is a nineteen ninety six Ford with two hundred and fifty thousand kilometers. And truck aid is showing its age, et cetera. And so they're suggesting financing this twenty twenty, a new twenty twenty one four by four pickup truck. Approximate cost of forty thousand, financing it over sixty months, add a monthly loan payment of eight fifty three. Now, again, there's. There's a problem there or a a a big issue. And then transfers to reserve, replacement tanker scheduled for two zero twenty two, that's next year, at a cost of four hundred thousand. And a current pre budget, pre audit balance in the fire department vehicle reserve is two hundred and sixty thousand. And the draft two zero twenty one budget proposes a transfer of fifty into that reserve. Which is in line with our current reserve policy, the reserve policy states that the upper limit of the reserve is four hundred thousand. So that you've got enough to replace the tanker tanker. So. I mean, I need some discussion around these two issues. And there's a third issue, I guess, at the top of page twenty one. The draft twenty one twenty one budget proposes a transfer of thirty thousand into the reserve. To refund major repairs at both fire stations. And again, the reserve policy states that the lower limit should is approximately one forty and it's only at seventy three. And another issue on the next paragraph, which is the communications reserve, has a pre audit balance of one hundred and fifteen thousand. The draft twenty twenty one budget proposes a transfer of twenty thousand to replace the dispatching equipment that was purchased in two zero fourteen. Reserve policy indicates that the upper limit of the reserve is two hundred thousand. And with the two zero twenty one budgeted transfer, the balance would be a hundred and thirty five at the end of twenty one. Now, might also say, from our discussions at county council, it looks like the entire communication. System. That that basically drives our fire departments is gonna have to all be changed. Am I right, Mister Grant? Have you heard talk about that?
Mister Chair, I I have not heard talk of that, but not surprising that that it would be coming up with to the end of its lifecycle. That was that was one of the prudent moves that 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 previous council did as soon as we put the new communication system in. Was to to establish this fund so that we were prepared to 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 pay our share at that time.
So I'll go to the chief, chief, have you heard anything about the replacement of the communication system?
I have not.
Okay.
You're, sorry, you're you're not referring to the provincial emergency radio operation that.
No, I I believe we get our communication, or now, I I may have two things confused here. It may be the, no, is our fire dispatch system operated through Rockwell?
Yes.
Yeah, now that's the system, the entire Rockwell system to be replaced.
I I do know that the the consoles and the all the the hardware in the dispatch center. It is 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 showing its age and with next generation nine one one and some of those upgrades that are coming, they're they're very expensive. But I haven't heard any kind of a of a timeline or or anything like that.
And I know at United Counties, we're budgeting a fair amount of money, I think it's gonna be replaced in two zero twenty two. And I think we're putting a substantial amount into a reserve account to cover that in two zero twenty two. So, we have four issues here. Money into the reserve account for communications, money into the reserve account for. Repairs to both fire station, money into the reserve account for a replacement tanker. And replacement of a nineteen ninety six Ford. Truck. Deputy Mayor.
First question to for through the chair to the chief. Going back to March seventh, two zero nineteen document from the two zero nineteen budget. And it was the new rescue unit. And and the purpose of that was to to obtain pre budget approval to prepare a tender for the new heavy duty rescue vehicle. And the background of that said that replacement of van one was included in the capital budget for two zero nineteen. Twenty three year old vehicle no longer meets the need of the department, the intent is to combine the equipment of van one and truck eight into a single unit. Did the rescue vehicle, the heavy duty rescue vehicle not, was was, is it not able to do that?
Through the chair, yes, it is, the 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 van, the existing van that we had was kind of the bunker gear fire supply van. And truck eight was all the extrication stuff, that is all on the new van now. So the the proposed truck to replace that would be used for strictly for personnel and equipment back and forth to the fire scene, to the fire station. Trainings, meeting, basically, just a generic utility vehicle, if you will.
Okay, but do we, so there's a question.
Yeah, so, I mean, the 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 thought of me when I went back through it was that we had already taken that one out. You know, when we agreed to get rid of van one and and truck eight, that that the new one was billed as having all of those possibilities. But now it seems like we're putting track, truck eight back into the budget, so. And I, it's just an observation.
Well, no, but it's a very valid point, I mean, because it's a basic change in principle.
Yeah, I brought it up for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, and then I had to go back a few years to find it, but it's very obviously there.
Need more discussion around that point.
Well, we're trying to. Deputy Mayor, we're trying to go backwards here, we are presented with an issue that we're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars on a on a truck. And and was sold to us on a bit similar to our road crew, that we get rid of. That money in one truck and get rid of two trucks on the road. Department, and this truck would remain here, and we don't seem to be decreasing. Where we were, and we've got a, instead of a small van, we're in, we've got a. State of the art emergency vehicle there there that we bought, and now we still want to keep another truck.
Need more discussion, and that.
It's like an, this is like an ask for a new truck.
Yes, exactly. At at sixty months for eight fifty three a month.
Yeah.
So I'm just thinking, eight fifty three a month times twelve is the impact on the budget. For 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 five years, actually.
Yeah.
Ten thousand a year.
Ten thousand a year.
Ten grand a year, yeah.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
Do a chair to the chief, what are we doing now to go on our training exercises and and running back and forth to fires? What are we using? As of today?
Through the chair, we're we're still utilizing truck eight in special and and the pickup truck from from station two. And if if I may, there is there is still a need for moving equipment back and forth, soil coal, soil bunker gear. Pumps, other equipment, you can't put that inside a van with people.
Yeah, I know, but that's what we were sold.
So, if 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 I if I may, Mister Chair, if if you read the background, it was to. Combine the operational or emergency response capabilities of two vehicles into one, which certainly did happen.
I know, or the other part of the sale was if one vehicle would disappear.
I I I don't see that in the background information.
Well.
That is not, that that is not exactly what was indicated.
That's the way we interpreted it.
Well, and 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 my and my and my apologies if 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 the feeling is that it that. You know, some somehow it was interpreted in in that way. But I I can certainly say from past experience. That a number of personal vehicles have been used to 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 carry back equipment. And those 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 individuals are are long serving members and have sort of always done it. But it's. It 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 does create a little bit of an issue. So I I I can appreciate that 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 there may have been. Some 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 miscommunication in that regard. Certainly unattended.
Do the chair to the chief, is the truck, isn't that, is that the truck that was donated to us from the CP rail? Okay, so that's the one that was redone and it's done once.
Well, the truck, maybe it'll, how many times does it get used in the year, maybe it'll last another year. My my point is, do we really need, do we really need a four hundred, a forty thousand dollar truck for, I don't know, eight, ten, twelve uses a year? Ten thousand dollars a year for five years, do we really need it? Or, I mean, when you look at it from the point of view of what of the of the things that we're anticipating here, can only do so much. Counselor.
How many kilometers, through the chair and the chief, how many kilometers are you here that we put on this truck?
Through through the chair, I'm I'm not sure. I I don't have a number, the truck is prime, truck eight was primarily used as a a a medical vehicle. So it wasn't a vehicle that we would utilize to take to a training session or take to a to a town to a public event or something like that. Because it was in service as a response vehicle. This vehicle would not be technically a response vehicle, like a first duty vehicle, it would be a vehicle you call when you need to. Transfer people, you need to restock bottles, you're you're going to a training session with a bunch of stock packs that you have to go through Lindhurst, so you need to.
About, you all heard about Prescott, you know, the increase in the automatic aid cost, but. If you look on the budget sheets, it looks like it was, it's a doubling, they increased it by fifteen and the budget is thirty. So if that's an increase of fifteen for two zero twenty one.
Which page, Jack?
The twenty three.
We good? They back on?
So to me, that's a doubling of what we had before.
I'll just wait.
Mister Chair, can I just confirm with the clerk that we're back and good?
Yeah.
Are we, are we good clerk?
Yes, it looks like the township office connection completely failed, the rest of us were still here.
Perfect, okay, we we we, I will make sure that we ban your internet bill.
No, no.
Thank you.
Hey, we're all having a party. Run, run, run in the town, right, we're trying to run a tight chip here, we wait the last minute to ban the internet.
I know. Okay, so back to Mister Bradley's question, which is a question on page twenty three. Related to Prescott automatic aid agreement. So in two zero twenty, it looks like we didn't budget anything, nor did we spend anything. And now we're budgeting thirty thousand in two zero twenty one, what exactly happened there? I think that was the essence of your question, Mister Brad.
Well, if, yeah, because I'm tying it to page twenty where it says that costs will be fifteen thousand, an increase, okay?
Correct, so if I, if if I may, Mister Chair, we we haven't received the invoice from 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 the town of Prescott as of yet.
For two zero twenty.
For two zero twenty.
So we will get an increase, we will get a.
We will get an invoice.
And what will the estimated amount be?
Pretty close to fifteen thousand, I think.
So, so the additional, my point was that the increase. To the town of Prescott of approximately fifteen thousand essentially doubles what we've been paying paying on that.
Potential, there 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 is the potential, yes.
So is that a reasonable thing?
That 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 is a reasonable number and it was, it was discussed pretty thoroughly when 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 council entered into that agreement with with the town of Prescott.
What's a different double?
It's a big, well, it's a base rate, which which is pretty close to the fifteen thousand that that's currently being paid. And then then it's based on 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 actual response on top of that.
So do we use them often when we have a fire?
In 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 certain areas in the industrial market, I'll let the.
In certain areas in the industrial market, I'll let the chief expand a little bit more on that.
Certainly, the Prescott's automatic aid area now covers all of Cedar Grove Road and highway to everything south of the four oh one, east to Granville Park. So basically, every emergency call that happens in that area, Prescott is responding to. And if it's a minor occurrence, then Prescott will be the only ones responding and we will not be responding.
So they kick in automatically for that area?
And then we've agreed to pay them at the standing provincial rates. Which is, okay, so now, so that explains, so just to go back, we will get an invoice for 2020 and that will be around fifteen thousand. So to the treasurer, will that be booked as a 2020 cost?
Certainly, through the chair, yes. Once the invoice has come, we still have an ability to accrue back to 2020.
Okay, all right, so then the thirty that we're looking at here is an outside number because it's fifteen base plus service, right? If we didn't theoretically, theoretically, if we didn't have any service calls in 2021, our exposure would be limited to the fifteen thousand base, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
Sorry for my emphasis.
Okay, so now back to Counselor Hunter. And Counselor Hunter's point is, why are we buying a brand-new 2021 four-by-four pickup instead of that forty thousand dollars rather than trying to make arrangements for an off-lease vehicle, a good-used off-lease vehicle, and there's lots of them available? And, you know, I'm going to jump on to Counselor Hunter's point because I don't, I don't see the point of a brand-new vehicle at this eight fifty-three when, when, and I don't like sixty-month leases either. So I would, I would.
You don't like what, Mr. Mayor?
Sixty-month leases, that's a five-year lease. It ties up your budget for five years, ten thousand dollars a year. So I would rather, we went into a used lease vehicle, eighteen, twelve, fifteen, eighteen months, twenty thousand kilometers on it, and you're going to get it at a lot less than forty thousand dollars.
And Mr. Mayor, you're also going to put new tires on it? You're going to put an oil pan on it, an AC compressor?
Not true. Not true.
Not a leased vehicle coming back, you're not. I'm not saying that, you're reading this the wrong way. I'm talking about Truck Eight.
Oh, oh, the existing truck.
What I'm saying is you're going to have to put new tires on it. It says right here, an oil pan, which is going to be probably close to a thousand dollars for that truck.
We're not talking, so we're.
Just a moment.
Yes, go ahead.
And then an AC compressor. So you, that, all that money that you're going to spend, you may as well put it into a lease, an off-lease vehicle, a new, another vehicle.
Oh, okay, so we're on the same page.
That's what I'm saying.
My apologies. So we're not arguing whether or not to be able to change the replace, it's how.
I'm all, I'm all in favor, I'm all in favor of a lesser expensive vehicle. For sure, for sure.
Okay, so could we instruct that the line twenty-one fifty-six ten on page twenty-three, which is the ten thousand dollar loan payment, will reduce that to five thousand dollar loan payments? And the staff will be charged with finding a vehicle that they can replace at five thousand dollars a year with less years? Can we provide that instruction? Looking for a direction here?
I would agree with that.
Thank you very much, got one.
Two.
Two. You with us?
Well, I'm with us, that's the way you want to go. I just, I'm not really in favor of buying these half-ton or three-quarter ton trucks and running them through an operational budget, I think they're capital. I like your budget for whatever the truck is, buy it out and. Because I think they're capital, I shouldn't be running through those operational.
I agree there. When I looked at that forty thousand, I know we can't do anything unless it's over fifty. That should be a capital myself, I agree. And you're not going to find nothing for four hundred and sixteen dollars a month, Mr. Mayor. I mean, that's what you want for five thousand a year.
If I could just add, the vehicle that I looked at, and that's just rock pricing, that's a base model tradesman vehicle. I don't think we're going to find much of a two-year lease return. That's going to be, that's going to be that price range or more because people lease a seventy thousand dollar truck, not a forty thousand dollar. That's just my opinion.
That's right.
You're going to be in a five or six-year-old vehicle at that price.
You're not going to get some four hundred bucks off. Just not going to cut it.
But even if you look at, look at all kinds of half-ton trucks that are set to run brand-new ones that are 2019 and 2020s that are sitting on, well, it's not 2021, they're hugely discounted.
Yeah, there's a big used market right now. Lots of stuff in the used market.
Well, these are brand-new ones that are left over with a burnt soul.
Okay, Chair's looking for a direction. I sense that there's a, I sense that there's a will around the table to get this off the operational budget and somehow include it in the capital budget and finance it a different way. Am I getting that feeling correct?
It's an asset, becomes an asset. So, I mean, it should be depreciated and all that sort of stuff. The fact that it doesn't meet the fifty thousand threshold or whatever is.
Yeah, I don't know where that number came from.
Yeah.
Our asset is.
If I may, Mr. Chair, we've had leases with respect to loaders and once they come off lease, they're onto our assets.
Oh, yeah.
So this truck would go onto the assets. And in the past, we've had some good luck with the leasing. We've done it in environmental services a couple times, which minimizes that impact in certain cases. But if it's the will of the committee that they would prefer putting that in as a capital and outright purchase in one year and having a more impact on the budget in one year and in providing staff with flexibility to sort of be sole sourcing with some of these items because it's not going to be as easy to go out to an RFP for a potential, you know, vehicle return or items like that. So there's some flexibility that would certainly need to be provided. And I'm just trying to get a better sense. If the will is that the truck would go forward and place that in under capital.
Am I getting a nodding of heads around that one?
Just a comment on, and I agree with the CEO that have more flexibility in getting it. My point of thinking it should be the capital. That's granted, it might affect the budget for this year. But every time we keep leasing these over four- and five-year period, we keep adding these leases. We're committing a next budget next year, we've already committed, we've got an increase in that budget because we're putting these leases forward all the time. You're just building and you just keep adding on. Every time we add, there's that much more money that's already committed for next year. But the next counselor or the exhauster, somebody else sitting there, they've already got this money committed. If we're going to buy a truck, in a year we're doing a budget, that's a capital item. I think that should be figured out how we're taking out that on the budget this year. It's all tax, or there's a certain amount, rather than taking out of capital reserves to help fund that truck to decrease the value a little bit on this year. I just don't like continuously building leases. We've got loader leases, we've got truck leases and stuff, and they just keep building this amount that's already committed in the budget before you ever start setting down them, so.
Okay, I got to get moving here. I got to get off this truck. I'm getting, selecting, I'm hearing around the table that we need to have another look at this truck. And I got to get back to Deputy Mayor Deschamps' point. Rightly or wrongly, I, in my mind also, and I had forgotten it, and thank you very much to Deputy Mayor for bringing it forward, I had forgotten that when we replaced that one, we were to be taking two vehicles out of service and replacing them with one. And that was what was in the back of my mind, I had forgotten it. But so we seem, as I've heard the discussion, be prepared, we seem to be prepared to replace Truck Eight. We seem to be, but not in the manner that it's shown on this page. So I'm going to stop there for now because there's a number of other issues here. We've got this question of tanker to be replaced next year at four hundred thousand. And there's a draft, the draft budget proposes a transfer of fifty thousand into that reserve. Is there any discussion on that or will we just allow that to go ahead? I need a nodding of heads, that goes ahead.
I have a question with respect to that paragraph.
Go ahead.
And if we transfer the fifty thousand into the reserve.
Yep.
That still leaves us with a ninety thousand shortfall for next year when we want to buy this thing. So where are we going to get that ninety K?
Well, that will have to come out of levy next year.
So.
I mean, that's plainly simple.
So we're going to, what we're faced with then is ninety K next year, fifty this year, or a hundred and forty? Total, you know, I mean, if this thing is going to get replaced, we've got to deal with that financial issue, how we're going to finance it.
Yep, and all we can do is take a little baby step this year.
Yeah, that's what I, the way I would see it, is put a little bit in and.
Well, less than fifty.
Okay, and then maybe even next year, we can look at whether it's scheduled to be replaced.
You don't have to guarantee replacing in 2022.
So maybe next year, we can look at whether we can get another year out of it and put in a bit more money.
Okay, so now I'm going to let Mr. Grant jump in here and he'll explain why you probably are not going to get another year of it. Although, if he gives the explanation that I'm expecting he's going to give, I'll take issue with it, but let's give him a chance. Give him a chance, he'll jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and giving me the opportunity to fail miserably. So if you think that I'm going to refer to public works, I am going to refer.
No.
Okay, so I am going to refer to public works.
We're just talking about the tanker right now.
And that is a vehicle asset. And what we ended up happening in public works that we're just getting out of is the fact of, well, we don't have to replace that one this year, we can extend it another year, and another year, and then we started to get into extremely old vehicles with extremely high costs. And we've had to purchase about three tandem axles in the last, in the last four years to start on that path. So I really, I don't look at these as issues as much as I look at them as opportunities for not only forecasting for budget 2021, but also in 2022, right? And I don't think that you want to end up with four hundred thousand or less than four hundred thousand in the reserve and take all that out in the reserve to replace one vehicle. It's just, these are, these are very difficult times, but I don't think that a default automatically should be extend one year because we start to, we start to get into more purchases on a more frequent basis to get back on track. So I just.
Okay, so let me go back a step because when I read this briefing note, and although it doesn't tell us in this briefing note, we're replacing a tanker. My understanding is, and this briefing note doesn't tell me the age or how long this tanker has been on fleet. But my understanding is that frontline tanker fighter fire trucks have to be replaced or there is some standard that they have to be replaced at the end of ten years. I don't know that that's true and I know that I had another mayor on county council that really took umbrage with that arbitrary ten-year life. But let me just go back and check the facts. Will this tanker, is this tanker a frontline tanker that's reaching a ten-year life?
Mr. Mayor, this tanker will be twenty years.
It's a twenty-year-old tanker?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It will be twenty-two.
Your pardon?
It will be twenty-two in 2022.
It'll be twenty-two in 2022, so it's not a frontline vehicle then?
We utilized three tankers to achieve our tanker shuttle accreditation. Those tankers have to be within, they have to be newer than twenty years. We have to redo our accreditation in 2022. So unless we replace a tanker, they will not allow us to use that tanker to retest for our tanker shuttle.
Got you. So it has to be replaced in 2022? If we're going to get our reset.
If I may, I think we would get by if we were committed and we made the purchase and the truck was being built in 2022. They may be happy with that, knowing that we're committed and it's on its way. They may allow us to test with the old one.
Got you. Okay, so the question is, does the twenty, does the fifty thousand go into the reserve? I need a shaking or a nodding of heads, the Chair's looking for a direction. That's the issue. You don't have much choice. Hey?
I'll put the fifty in, I think we've got to keep replacing.
Yeah, we really don't have much choice with that fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, so the fifty stays in, that transfers.
Agreed.
All right, now, the pre, the next issue. We added balance in the building reserve of seventy-three thousand and the draft 2021 budget proposes a transfer of thirty into that reserve to fund major repairs to both fire stations. Now, does the thirty get transferred to do major repairs at both fire stations? Need some discussion on that issue.
What are the major repairs?
Through the chair. What are the major repairs?
If I may, I believe the idea of the, of the reserve account is to be ready for repairs. I can't tell you when a roof is going to leak or an air conditioner is going to quit, our furnace is going to quit.
I know, but there's seventy-three thousand in that account now.
Correct.
And, and this is, the whole purpose of this is to build that account up further for that purpose, but there's no immediate emergency.
That is, that is an accurate statement.
Okay, so the immediate emergency, as I define it, is the two-point-six-five percent tax increase. So does the thirty thousand get transferred or doesn't? Mr. Bradley?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I look at page twenty-two, fifty-two zero-three, Building Supplies and Repairs. In 2020, we spent twenty thousand dollars.
What page you on, Mr. Bradley?
Twenty-two. But the note is on twenty-one, but I don't remember twenty-two.
Go ahead, plus line item.
So the line item is, I don't know where it was at.
Fifty-two zero-three?
Fifty-two oh-three.
Go ahead.
We spent Building Supplies and Repairs. So we spent twenty thousand, one hundred and forty-six. We budgeted, we're budgeting twenty-two. So if we're going to take money out of the buildings reserve to do repairs.
No, that wasn't out of, that wasn't out of the reserve.
No, I know, but it looks like we spent twenty thousand and we, did we take anything out of reserves? I don't think so.
No, not according to, not according to sheet twenty-two.
No, so. If we put the thirty in, are we still going to have, we're going to spend, we're going to budget another twenty-two?
Yes, that's correct. You'll budget twenty-two to be used this year?
That's right.
And thirty with the reserve?
So the impact is fifty-two, fifty-two.
Yes, that's correct. I just want to double-check that with the treasurer. So to the treasurer, I don't see where on page twenty-two or twenty-three the thirty thousand to reserves is going in, is it included? Yes, it's included in the hundred, right? Fifty K for the tanker replacement, thirty for the buildings and twenty for fire communication. There they are, right there.
Yeah, and that is consistent with what we did in 2020. It's following our reserve fund policy. And I think committee is concentrating on the word repairs and maybe we should not have. And I think committee is uh is concentrating on the word repairs, and maybe we should not have used that. But both those buildings are aging. The one in Cardinal, we are doing studies currently for replacement. It's quite evident that that building is aging, and we, as the fire chief has indicated, we don't know if something's gonna come up. Um, it's probably best prudent practice to put away money aside just in case, since the budget seems to be getting slashed and dashed to get to zero. We need to try to be a little more prudent in what money we set aside just in case. You know, we don't uh, we don't have new, new trucks, we don't have new buildings. We're trying to maintain these older facilities and and vehicles uh with a very limited operational budget. So we need some kind of contingency, so um it's only good practice. It's not an increase from last year, and it's in line with our reserve policy.
Okay, I need discussion.
So I would agree, put it in.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, so the thirty goes in. So the 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 treasurer speaks eloquently and 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 the, and the committee folds. So now we're at the net last one, which is the Fire Department Communications Reserve. And the budget proposes a transfer of twenty thousand into that reserve.
I don't think we have any trace in that by the sounds of it from you.
Okay, so the twenty goes.
I think you sold that one.
Well, I'm not, no, 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 I wasn't trying to sell it, I'm just trying to outline the issue.
Yeah, you did. So I have some questions, though.
Because it doesn't happen until a year or so. Go ahead.
Does the radio systems digi- are they digital?
I think that's the point, they're changing it to digital.
Well, maybe the fire chief could.
Yeah, through the chair, the uh the upgrade in twenty fourteen did go to the P twenty-five digital uh.
So you're on a digital system, right? And the one in Brockville is digital.
Correct.
So it's, and and we bought it in twenty fourteen, right, or we made that change in twenty fourteen. So that's six years old. There's no radio system on earth, a digital radio system on earth, that should be to be replaced in six years. Now, the, the, if the technology changes, yes. But if you're working on a digital system and you're freak, unless you're getting freak changes, um, I don't see why anybody in their right mind would start replacing radio systems that are less than fifteen years, twenty years old, unless the technology's forcing it.
Okay, so I can't uh, I can't respond because of, I, the briefing note is not in front of me and I can't, I can't respond, so. All I, I just recall the gist of the discussion. But but, and and it's not as if it's gonna be changed in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, rather. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a look forward to the point that it has to be done, and I can't remember the reasons.
Well, why don't the people that sit around these tables in different councils ask technical questions?
Well.
These are huge dollar expenses.
Yep.
Okay, millions, and not for us. Regional wide. You gotta get your act together, guys, and you gotta ask the right questions. Well, I lived in that world for forty years, so I know that, you know, these radio sys- we were using radio systems forty years old. Now, they were analog, but, you know, once the thing changed to digital, bang, we went over.
Okay, so I'll get to the briefing note from county.
If I, if I may, Mister Chair, if we can go back to twenty fourteen, and 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 you probably recall this, that the county system went from analog to digital.
Okay.
Our cost for the township was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yep.
In twenty fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Right, you, if you recall, that there were other municipalities that were not able to do that, and the county took care of the loan.
That's correct.
And we wanted it over five years so that we could pay that off and start building a reserve. I believe it's, I believe it's over a ten-year period.
Yep.
So we're, we're, we're paying that off. Plus, one of the things that was mentioned at the counties was the next time that this system is ready to be replaced, no loans, you better be prepared to pay your share.
That's right.
We started this reserve in anticipation, not for replacement in six years, maybe not replacement in ten years, all right, maybe in fifteen. But this way, when that comes, we're prepared to replace that asset without a massive impact on the budget year.
And the briefing note says, would I replace it?
No, uh, no, uh, we have to be prepared to replace it. And and and, you know, speaking to Mister Grant's point, I mean, there's a, there's at least two other municipalities that the lo- the county took loans on their behalf. And and they're not, their loans are not paid off yet, because they took them out over a period of ten years. Their loans are not paid off yet, and they're gonna be still paying on the twenty-fourteen upgrades while they're paying.
So.
While they're paying for the next upgrade.
Let's cut to the chase, we don't know when this is gonna be replaced.
Well, I can tell you that, like, I'll get that information from the briefing note. I'll get it, I'll bring the briefing note.
And is it imminent? Do you remember?
No, it's not imminent. It's warning, it's a warning.
Okay, well, then I agree with the C A O that we should be prepared so that we
Okay.
If we're faced with that situation somewhere down the road, now whether it's twenty or ten or whatever is up for.
Okay, so I'm I'm hearing that 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 money goes into the reserve. Any further discussion?
Well, why is it twenty?
Your pardon?
Why twenty?
Because that was our policy. From our pol- from one of our policy discussions earlier on in the year.
Well, that was because the lower limit is uh.
I think we said that in previous councils, we discussed that when we got shocked by that two-hundred-thousand-dollar bill that got through with their cable here one night.
Yeah.
And we say that, well, for the ten years, we should be looking at twenty thousand dollars a year if we don't get another two-hundred thousand dropped in front of a share of the same, you got sixty days to pay it, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we're, we've chewed that one to death. What was that colorful expression you used, slash and what? I I forget what the.
You'll have to watch the video to.
All right, so I'm moving now then to, uh, it was very colorful. I'm moving now then to eight F, which is the draft recreation department budget. And so now we have the briefing note on page twenty-four and twenty-five, and then we have the detail running through twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and into thirty-six. So.
I'm not looking at the operational part of it at all?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, Chair's open for a discussion here. Silence is definitely.
Everything seems to be increased in the operation. Pretty near, so. Looks like quite a at some place there thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, there's an increase in operations.
Uh, now, where are you looking?
I looked in the fire department. Twenty-two and twenty-three, the operational part. Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Well, that's fire. Oh, you're back on fire?
Yeah, I, I said, we never looked at the operational at all and fire.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, oh.
The capital.
Oh, you, I, I'm moving.
Not to go back, really.
My apologies. I I just, I, I, to be honest with you, I felt that the committee didn't have any appetite for adjusting the capital ask. There's probably wouldn't be much appetite for adjusting the operational ask. If there's any appetite to adjust the operational ask, I'm more than prepared to carry on the discussion. But I think one part of the operational ask that we did address was on page twenty-three of thirty-nine, where we talked about addressing the issue of the loan payments. And and we charged staff with finding another way out of that issue.
I took my point, and I've never really shown that.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, we had, we had, we, we, we had kind of uh left off with a little bit of an understanding that you're looking at it from a, from a, from a, like, this year, capital purchase of some, wh- wh- whether that's through a return lease or or other option, but there was really no direction to uh to 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 remove that item and.
Well, I thought I asked for a nodding of heads and got a consensus that that's where the direction that the committee was providing.
Yeah.
I thought I did, yeah, yeah, I did.
The other thing we did was the thirty thousand for the aid agreement. We said it's fifteen for twenty twenty, and fifteen plus for twenty twenty-one, but, so that'll reduce that number.
No, no, no. You're talking about the press that automatic aid?
Sorry.
You're talking about press that automatic?
You're saying, like, if, don't we have the twenty, or the fifteen grand for twenty twenty somewhere in the system?
You, no, 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 the treasurer indicated that when the invoice for twenty twenty comes, it will be paid from twenty twenty budget.
Okay. And I asked the C A O if, I think you did as well, if that was gonna be in the neighborhood of fifteen plus the whatever they add on.
Yes, the answer was yes.
So that fifteen is sitting in limbo somewhere, waiting to be paid.
No.
It's not showing on the sheets.
The fifteen from twenty twenty?
Yeah. But now we're gonna have thirty in twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Based on what?
Well, it'll be, it's, it's, it's a placeholder, there're fifteen of it is guaranteed we have to pay.
Yes.
And we're estimating, based on the number of fires that we've had each year so far, and and the rates that we're gonna pay, we're estimating that there'll be fifteen base plus fifteen for service. Right? I got that right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's why there's thirty in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay.
All right, now let's go back to the truck. We have an understanding that the staff is gonna deal with this issue and bring it back in another form. I don't care what form it's in.
Can I ask the chief a question?
Go ahead.
Um, through, through the chair to this, to the chief, does it, does it have to be, like, does it have to be a pickup? Can it be like a a van, can it be? Like, is there a reason that it has to be a four-by-four uh pickup, or or are there other options?
Through the chair, um, I would pick up truck would be the the best option, because, I mean, we're, we're talking about uh after a fire scene, like, hundreds of feet of hose that have been drug through who knows what, right? All that stuff has to come back to home. Yeah, and and again, we, we have some other equipment that that's kind of seasonal, that that, you know, it sits at the fire hall, and when we need it, we throw it on a truck and and we take it to the fire scene. Just, uh, if I can throw it an option that maybe council want to consider. Um, van one, that that we declared surplus, it sold today at auction and 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 did pretty well, we got seventeen-one for it. Maybe you would like to take the proceeds from van one and the sale of truck eight, once it's replaced. That's probably half the cost of the truck that we looked at.
Well, again, now there's new information that I think two minutes coming on the table half an hour late. But I mean, you're seventeen, you're halfway there. I mean, now you're, now you're, now you're not looking at, now you're not looking at your your eight, eight, eight hundred a month anymore. No, sure not.
It's kind of like saying, saying, saying you can have a hamburger and then later say you really could have a steak.
Okay, so the, uh, uh, my point is that I, I don't think we should be sitting here trying to to buy a vehicle. My point is that I think we should be telling the staff, we're not prepared to pay eighty-five-three a month for sixty months, find another way. And and the chief has just outlined one.
I'm thinking now, now, what he said here, they got for this, and they got another truck to sale, and the budget we got here right now has ten thousand dollars in operational for for that. We've got thirty thousand dollars, dollars there, I definitely think now it should be a capital asset purchased in one year.
And where's your ten, Mister?
Well, you've got ten in your operation, that's why I want to come back to operation, the ten thousand is in the operational budget to lease the truck.
Yep, yep, yep.
So if we got seventeen there and and what do you get for the half come, we have eight, you sell it, three thousand maybe?
I think I guess, I never would have thought somebody got seventeen for van one.
So, so, uh, Mister Chair, leave, leave, leave that with us, and we, we, we will make that adjustment in return.
I've been trying to do that for thirty minutes.
Uh, and 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 my apologies, if uh if that decision was made, I I I may have missed it.
Okay, so we're agreed that that's what we're doing, we're leaving that with staff.
I got one other question in your operational.
Thanks for bringing us back there, we got, we made some major headway there.
One thing on your operational through the chief, uh, and this is a line item that keeps coming forward for for uniforms, last year it was twenty-one thousand, and then this year we got twenty-five thousand. We got roughly forty-five of fire department people, are we spending an average five hundred dollars a firefighter on uniforms?
Through the chair, the the line item, uh, uniforms might be a little bit, uh, a little bit, uh, deceiving. Uniforms, that's basically anything that that's issued to a firefighter, so that's bunker gear, boots, coveralls, hats, uh, uniforms, like this kind of uniform.
I'll let it, sounds better. That's what, I was kind of wondering if we're good. For buying a new uniform for a firefighter every year, five hundred dollars a piece. Yep. Putting your bunker gear and senior and everything all in under that, that's a different.
Yeah, different story.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we prepared to move on from this one now?
Yeah.
Okay, so now here I am again. I'm now on page twenty-four of thirty-nine, which is the draft recreation budget, item six F. Now, looking for comments here.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I think with this one being, and and I don't know if if if, um, the uh, the facilities manager wants to do this, but, um, I mean, this is a big one. And and I almost think it'd be worth it, you know, like, he spoke and presented it to us, and then we had asked him the questions instead of just ripping it apart without hearing what he has to say. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Did you ask him how he felt?
No, I didn't. No problem at all, thank you very much, uh, through the chair to Thorey, thank you. Um, so the briefing note talks about the uh, the operating budget, uh, just outlining, um, a couple of items, um, indicating that the uh, the donation from the Port of Johnstown, this uh will be the last year for that uh payment. Uh, combined arena operating revenues have decreased by a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars between the two rooms, and that is obviously as a result of uh, closures in uh, in two-twenty, uh, to COVID-nineteen. Um, the overall parks budget was a slight uh decrease, as indicated, um, and operating budgets for both pools at the south and the south center are being similar to the twenty-twenty budget. Um, and that is with the anticipation that we'll be operating both of our indoor pools this year. Um, the canteen expenses, again, that's a a a COVID situation, we didn't, we ran the canteens at both arenas, uh, basically January, February, up to the twelfth of March of twenty twenty, and we haven't operated the canteens at either arena since. Uh, we did operate the canteen at the water this past summer, and uh, we, I had given us, given the council a report at one of our previous meetings. Um, just a brief description regarding the transfer to reserves. And then the capital budgets, there's basically, there's three items there. Um, number one is the replacement of the, of the, of the pool filter, uh, at the Cardinal, uh, pool. Um, money was set aside last year in the twenty-twenty budget, and this year we're just asking for the remainder of that, um, to. Money was set aside last year in the twenty twenty budget and this year we're just asking for the remainder of that, uh, to finish the project. Purchasing of the Xanboli that has already been completed and we have taken over the, the ownership of that, uh, machine now. And it is, uh, being operated of our, uh, head of the ingredient arena. Um, item number three for the capital budget, um, is the replacement of the dehumidifier at the special arena. We have two, uh, dehumidifiers in the facility, one is, is broken and is not, uh, cost effective to repair it. It is the twenty six year old model, the other model is twenty two years of age and the plan, my plan is that if we can replace the one, that we would have the two. And then when the, the, the older one, uh, breaks down, it's, that we would probably be able to get away with not having to run. Um, we would just use the one because we run a, a shorter season. We had two in the arenas to begin with back in the day because we didn't operate, uh, August ice and we ran into April sometimes as well. We don't do that now because of the, uh, the special fair and the ingredient arena, so we basically just run late September till the fifteenth of March primarily is our season and, um, the humidity times are more, fact that we can't have it in September, October, but I feel, uh, a one dehumidifier will, will do. I just would not want to have the second one that's working over there, uh, calf, and then we not have any, any dehumidifier in the facility. So that's why we have it in for replacement, uh, in the budget. Did you want me to go through page for page or is there questions that I can answer on any specific page regarding a specific line item?
No, the way I heard the request, you wanted to go through page by page.
That's what you want?
That's the way I heard the request.
Okay. Um, the, uh, page number one just talks about the, the overall, uh, recreational summary for the operating and the expenses.
Is that page twenty six?
Yeah, that would be page twenty six, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, twenty seven shows just the final parts of the, um, the capital projects for the pool and the work at the arena. And then as, uh, Mr. Bradley, we say then we get into the weeds, which is the individual pages. I, I'll just, I'll highlight a couple of items on, on a specific page and if, if I don't get something that you'd like to question, by all means, um, I've got a detail of what each line item was spent, uh, if, if there's a question, I could, uh, certainly talk to that. Um, the one item, uh, line item eighty one fifty three twenty nine, professional development. Uh, budgeted fifteen thousand in, uh, in twenty twenty and only spent twenty three sixty three. Again, that was because of COVID nineteen, typically we send three to four staff members to Guelph University in April for a training with the ORFA, the Ontario Recreation Facility Association. Um, what we're doing this year, um, they, obviously because of COVID nineteen, uh, they've gone to an online training system for a lot of the, uh, the programs that I would send staff to. We have to remember that I have eight facility operators, six of them have three years or less experience in, in the arena or the pool environment. So over the next three to four years, um, we're going to be having to register them for various courses. I've registered three today for the basic refrigeration course, which they typically would take in, uh, in April, um, in Guelph. They're doing that online, they have a thirty day window to complete that, it's basically the same course, just taught online with tutorials and that, they are required to write the exam at the end and what have you. The cost is the same for the course, just we're not, we're saving a little bit of less on sending them up and having some hotel charges. So that's why that fee has stayed there at the fifteen thousand dollars. Any, any questions for, uh, page twenty eight?
Through the chair, basically, like, then you'll be able to train more people for the same, same money if you're not being in hotel and crowd time and stuff, you're good.
That, that is correct, yes. And there are some years that, you know, typically like, so my two senior, uh, veteran, uh, facility operators, sometimes they, they aren't able to go because I'm, I'm having to train the younger ones, so now I may be able to give Jeff or Kevin an opportunity to take a course online to, uh, to help them as well. So there's no questions on that, page two basically talks about the breakdown for, uh, parks and ball diamonds. I, again, a lot of our cost incorporated is salary and wages and, and, and the benefits, which is all at the, at the top of each page. Um, you'll see the capital expenditures, um, last year, we budgeted thirty and we spent thirty one, three eighty five, that's the, the docks and the extra docks that we had purchased. So that's why there was a little bit of an overage there, but I think the end result is that everyone was quite pleased with the, the docks and the new ramp system that we have in there, so.
Uh, can I ask, ask a question?
Yes.
In twenty twenty, we were pretty much in the COVID state for the entire year, you know, after February. Were the, the parks and marinas being operated, like, we spent a hundred and one thousand uh, in terms of labor and just wondering if we were operating a little bit below normal, but operating in parks and marinas through the summer?
Uh, yes, we ran our full operations, uh, had less staff. Um, but we did operate everything, um, and, uh, again, uh, even with the pandemic, the grass had to be cut, the sidewalks had to be trimmed. I, I feel, uh, we did a good job with our beautification, with our, uh, flowers and all that this year, so that just all helps, uh, look at that, that figure for the wages.
Okay.
Any other questions for page twenty nine? The next two pages are the swimming pools and, um, there, obviously there wasn't a whole lot of expenses there. There, there were some, uh, supply, building supplies and repairs, but very minimal. Um, insurance is something that is, is, uh, is basic, so basically page thirty and thirty nine, the numbers basically stay the same, my anticipation is that we will have both facilities, uh, ready and, uh, ready to operate, uh, provided, uh, the provincial government allows us to, to operate, uh, indoor pools. And at this time, like I, with the numbers that we're able to operate in the arena, I don't see that we won't be able to operate them. And, uh, so we will be going, uh, ahead with, uh, advertising for our summer pool and, uh, in day camp staff. Within the next couple of weeks, you'll see the advertisements for that going out. And the plan is that we, typically we would start our operations at the pools. First week of June, second week of June to get them ready, we'll probably look at them sometime in May to make sure that, uh, there was no, uh, major issues with them. We had them both inspected, uh, last fall, uh, had Benson, uh, pools come down and, and look at them. And from an outside perspective, looking at everything, uh, they thought that they, uh, held aware, uh, quite well, even though they weren't operated last year, so I'm anticipating that we won't have any major, uh, problems at the pools.
Did we have water in them last year?
Yes.
And circulating?
Not circulating, no.
How do you social distance in a swimming pool?
That'll be a challenge, um, there'll obviously be, um, on top of the lifeguards, we'll have to have, at arenas, I have COVID staff that work the front door. We'll have to have COVID staff at the arena, at, at the pools, um, so that it's not, it won't be the lifeguard's responsibility to try to enforce the social distancing, we'll have an, another person there for doing the contact tracing and, and the cleaning every half hour in and out and that, so a half hour swimming lesson will probably go to forty five minutes, so we allow that extra fifteen minutes to be able to get the people out of the building, then the next group come in, so we'll have time to be able to clean.
And you maintain six feet distance or two meter distance?
I, i- in the pool, we will, typically we would have anywhere from six to ten for swimming lessons and we, you may drop that, instead of ten, you may have six.
And do they wear masks?
Um, that's something that we haven't, uh, spoken to the health unit about yet.
They're gonna wear masks everywhere else?
You know, when they're at the walking track, they don't have to wear a mask and when they're on the ice playing hockey, they don't have to wear a mask. If they're doing physical activity, they're not required to.
Are the arenas operating?
The Cardinal Arena is operating, it, uh, we opened it back up on Tuesday of, of this week. And then we'll.
So the ice was never taken out?
We took the ice out and, and put the ice back in, it was shut down for a month. Counselor Cameron?
Uh, yes, Mike, just, uh, refer on page thirty one, uh, program supplies, four thousand, uh, four thousand, if we didn't have anything going on this, this summer, uh, with, with the, like, the day camp and the pools and things like that, how did we spend four thousand, what, what would, what would the four thousand, uh, be for?
Um, it, a, a portion of our online, um, booking facility program is, is paid, uh, through our program supplies. We have, um, yearly fees to the lifesaving society, that even though we didn't run the program, we have to still pay membership dues, which are nine hundred dollars, so there are just miscellaneous, uh, fees there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that's page thirty, now we're going to page thirty two, um, which is the ingredient Cardinal Arena. And, um, obviously the revenue, uh, basically, um, what we have budgeted for this year is based on what we rented last year during the same time period that we were open. So, um, you know, i- i- it's as close to a, um, an actual that I can give you. There potentially could be a little bit of room, it could go up, it could go down, it would all depend on whether or not we're able to stay open. For now, our plan is to operate the facility through till the end of May, like we typically do. Um, I, I have, uh, quite a bit of people showing some interest in spring ice. The groups that just started back up this week, typically they would be done on the fifteenth of March and they've extended their seasons, all the minor hockey and the first figure skating programs have, um, extended their programs through to the third, or sorry, the second of April. So additional three weeks, so our spring ice will basically start on Saturday, April the third and run for the, the two months there. The one i- item that obviously sticks out the most on that page would be, uh, line item seventy six fifty two oh seven. And as, as, uh, the committee is aware, there were various reports that came in through the season regarding the repairs that we had, um, at the arena, um, regarding the dehumidifier and the condenser. Um, and so the, the cost obviously far exceeded the budgeted figure. Um, but again, that are, th- they are things that are out of our control. Facility, um, maintenance agreements. We have simple refrigeration in there, we have our maintenance agreements for our air conditioner units with, uh, more smart plumbing and heating. Uh, we have our carbon monoxide sensor testings, that's where all those maintenance agreements are, are under.
Okay, on that page thirty two, I have, um, one question that maybe clear up for me.
Yes.
Uh, we budgeted, uh, three eighty six for ice rentals and we collected two thirty three, the type of thousands now.
Yes.
And, uh, so the revenue was in, was reduced on ice rentals by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Approximately. Uh, the salaries and wages, um, were only reduced by about twelve thousand dollars. So if we don't have the revenue, what were we doing, like, and nobody coming into the arena, what were we doing? Were we waiting for people to come or what?
Um, no, we did have, um, some staff laid off, but there, there was still salaries included in.
No, no, maybe I'm looking at it in a sort of a black and white situation because, okay, so when, when, um, the second wave hit, did all your revenue disappear or did you have some people coming in still on their contracts, playing hockey, figure skating or whatever?
Yes, we opened up the facility on the tenth of August.
Right.
And ran from the tenth of August through to December twenty fourth.
Yeah. So when, when the second wave hit, then did all revenue disappear?
The second wave is you're talking just in January of this year?
Yeah.
But that's not on this budget though.
Okay, right, and then of course you have the spring part of last year.
That is correct.
Which probably was reduced, uh, as well.
That is correct.
Cause the full, full impact hadn't been, uh, realized.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have, um, reduced the revenue and some of the expenses.
Yeah.
Based on.
No, I see that, yeah.
Any other questions for this page? Page thirty three just shows the, the arena, um, loan payments. Special arena, which is on page thirty four, again, it's a projected cost based on time. We didn't put the special arena ice back in after taking it out.
So it's still in?
It's out and it'll stay out. Typically, as I indicated at the start, we, we typically only run it to the fifteenth of March. Um, and, um, we were able to accommodate all the users out of the one ring, and the reason I say that is that some of the, of, of the kids that were in some of the programs within the associations decided not to come back, so they kind of condensed a little bit, so that's why they're gonna offer everything.
So, so are some of the youngsters from this area going down to Cardinal?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Um, again, something that is, is, is not always, uh, predicted is the repairs of, uh, these refrigeration repairs, which is line item eighty six fifty two oh seven. And again, uh, we had, um, a number of issues, while we, we still have the one issue with the dehumidifier, uh, which is not working, uh, but we've had numerous service calls and, um, a couple of small repairs on that at the beginning of the season. Um, and then we had the brine leak right there just before Christmas. And, uh, I indicated that at one of our last committee meetings that we had, so that, uh, was a cost of eight thousand dollars, which, uh, basically, uh, put us over the, uh, the, uh, operating expense budget line item. Any other questions, or, sorry, and while I already indicated the arena capital there is for the replacement of the, the dehumidifier, so.
Through the, through the chair to the facilities manager, uh, uh, Mike, what's the remaining lifespan estimate for the building?
Who's that?
I didn't hear.
The remaining lifespan estimate for that building? What we got? I think that I would have a better, a, a better idea of that, um, after in twenty twenty two, so in, in June of twenty twenty two, so in a year's time, we have to have the five year structural review done on it. So I, I, I think it would, I would be able to have a clearer picture after having that review done. I'm not keen on putting a lot of new technology into it, unless it's needed. I would think under ten years.
Okay, Mike, uh, given, given that that's a close estimate, you know, ten, twelve years, something of that nature. given given that that's a close estimate, you know, ten, twelve years, something of that nature. But do we have the the outline of a plan of what would we do? What kind? How would we react when it's shut?
No, I I don't believe that that we.
Conceptual, uh, yeah.
I don't think we've, uh, looked at that, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
John here, Councilor Hunter, please. You say the ten-year life expectancy. What do you think about a arena that's going to limit it to ten years operationally? But we've compressed it and it's had a new floor and it's had new roof on it and everything. What do you think? And and the structure of steel building that's going to limit it to a ten-year life expectancy?
Well, I and I, that's just a, I, that's a rough estimate, uh, Councilor Hunter. It could be longer. Um, the floor was done twenty-six years ago. Um, so there could be a cost, you know. You might get ten, fifteen, twenty more years of the floor, but you don't know. Um, the compressors that are in there obviously aren't the most expensive thing, and that's why the last one that we replaced, the fifty horse, instead of purchasing a new one, we purchased a used one. So, um, and that's what we potentially would be doing going forward. Simcoe are always on the lookout for those sort of, uh, items for us. Um, but I wouldn't think you we want to spend millions of dollars on it. The roof at some point would have to be done too, John, or sorry, Councilor Hunter. Um, it was done prior to me coming in twenty years ago. So we haven't done any work on on the roof at all.
When they do a structural review on that, do they x-ray the wells and the?
They, um, yes, it's it's a five. It's done every five years. So it's.
So they looked at all the bolts?
They looked at everything.
Yeah.
Yep. And we've had just minor repairs over the like the last one was done five years ago. We had to put a small, a sump pump underneath the bleachers to work some of the the, um, the rainwater that comes off the building, um, which very rarely gets used. Uh, we had to do some sanding uh, on some of the, uh, of the main beams and what have you. But as Counselor Hunter said, the actual structure itself is good. It's just whether or not we'll get another fifteen years out of the floor and compressor units.
So would it be a lot? If if that report comes in with relatively low levels of, you know, reparations, we could get another, you say, five years, every five years?
Every five, that's correct.
Get another five years at least out of it anyway.
The problem that we have at the arena, I know Counselor Hunter's quite well aware of it, is the change rooms are are small. So when you have a midget house game and you've got fifteen
Big guys.
Big guys in one of those change rooms. And we only have the four change rooms. We don't have the flexibility like we have in Cardinal tonight. There's thirty kids on the ice tonight at at nine o'clock. They use three change rooms. We don't have that flexibility in in terms of, and I know we've looked at potentially maybe building something on the inside, but we don't own a lot of the property outside of the building as well. Any other questions on page thirty four?
I don't have a question on page thirty four, but, uh, I've been going over all these revenues, uh, looking down to here. And I know it's not much money, but we did have an agreement with Augusta when they paid us. I'm so much sure that I don't see any place in here where we collect any money from them.
I believe that is on page twenty-eight under other revenues. What was the amount, Mike? Um, I believe it was the treasurer's there. It was a fifteen thousand, uh, amount?
Certainly. So, yeah, it's in under administration revenue under eighty eighty-one four two nine nine. And the amount that actually is there year to date is the total amount from Augusta. The sixteen one oh nine. It's it's indexed every year from the original fifty.
Okay, I just thought I'd like to show up under.
Um, page three. Going back here. So page thirty-five is the canteen operations. And again, those numbers are drastically reduced as far as the revenue be, uh, and again, it's based on running the summer canteen and hoping that we will be able to operate the canteens at the arena come September. So basically, that's taken the figures that we made in January, February, and half of March. Excuse me, in twenty twenty. And put it in the biggest of twenty twenty one.
Okay, so I have, uh, one question, Mr. Mayor, on this one, uh, for, uh, Mr. Spencer's, um, line eighty-seven fifty-three oh six, canteen purchases. Relative to canteen sales, which is eighty-seven forty-two eleven. In twenty twenty, just the actual for each dollar of purchase, we generated two point two dollars and thirty-eight cents in revenue. But for the budget of twenty twenty-one, we're only generating two dollars and twenty-seven cents for each dollar of purchases. So I don't know whether that's a conservative position or whether it's a real position.
It's a concern.
Yeah. The revenue figure could go up a little bit.
Yeah, a- absolutely, it could. Yeah, but it's, uh.
We end up getting shut down down for like three thousand dollars worth of food.
Yeah, which which can happen.
Changing your numbers.
Yeah.
Or wide open, it could be a lot.
Yeah. Page thirty-six of the budget is, uh, the South Center. And and again, um, it's a very bare bones budget there. Um, always has been, but the hall is still, um, in good shape. But it's not something that we're going to be able to utilize a lot this year for rentals if the provincial numbers, uh, don't change. Um, so. So that is page thirty-six of, that's the last page of the reparation budget.
Chair, my, uh, one question. We we have, uh, still have the COVID tests being done?
Yes, that is done on the first and the third. So it was done today and there tonight. They're there, uh, from three till six.
So is that a service that the township provides to build and give them free charge?
That is correct.
Okay. I thought we did, but if somebody asked me.
We also have a couple of services that are u- are utilizing, uh, the, uh, the media room, the John's, or sorry, at the, uh, ingredient center as well. Um, the foot care clinic is there, um, social services are there, and making play possible is also there. There are different groups that utilize that and that is a service that we allow for free.
It'd be nice if somewhere we could put that in the public if we do it doing this, but I don't think we get any credit for it.
I think it where?
Yeah.
On the back page.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, this one to, uh, through the chair to, uh, Mike and and maybe to Mel. Um, for the pool, the the pool filter for for Cardinal Arena, the amount left for for this year to taxation, if I'm correct, is is forty-three thousand, uh, five hundred. Is that that's the anticipated number? Thirty K what last year in the reserves and then and then forty-three five left this year?
That's correct.
So is it is it possible that we don't use taxation for that and we use the, uh, Cardinal Hydro Fund? To fund that forty-three five?
That would be a, sorry. Through the chair, that's that that's something that committee and council could could discuss, uh, that that option and and and, you know, uh, reserves, et 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 cetera. So. We have used that fund. The last time we did work on the baby pool back in two thousand and sixteen, I believe.
We we used it since nineteen.
Used it. Seventeen thousand.
Yes, a larger amount was used. Back in the baby pool. Um, I through the chair if I can go a little further. Mel, uh, do we know what the dollar value left in that account is?
Um, um, through the chair, unfortunately, right now I don't have that number, um, but, uh, I can I can certainly find it if you give me a moment.
Also, there's lots of. Well, I certainly, you know, for myself, I certainly like the idea of removing that, uh, from taxation. That that goes a long way uh, towards reducing our our overall number. And and I think it's a good use. It's been used before on the Cardinal Pool, and I think it it's a good use of the forty-three five.
Want to go one step further? Why don't you purchase the Zamboni too?
Are you making that suggestion?
Well, I mean, we have a hundred and twenty-five fifteen forty-three is ninety-three.
That gets you two percent.
I'm sorry?
Maybe it's close to your two percent.
Hmm. I mean.
Filter's gotta be done this year, Mr. Spencer? No question.
Uh, yes, it has to be done this year. Um, now, whether or not it gets done before the season opens, that's that's not a guarantee. It'll definitely be done in this calendar year. But the system that we are wanting to get is the identical system that we have in, uh, in Johnstown that we put in three years ago. And it was purchased, it was, uh, it's manufactured in the States. And because of the COVID situation down there as well, there could there could be a bit of a delay. So, um, there would be no guarantee that it would be ready to go.
For spring?
No, absolutely not. Now, this is just just knowing that.
You mean for spring?
That's correct, yeah.
What did I just hear? What did I just hear?
I think you heard the mic on, uh, on the table.
No, I thought I heard it said that that there's no guarantee that the pool filter is going to be done.
Well. It would be done, it would be done in the calendar year, but it might not be done before the opening of the pool.
For spring, Mr. Mayor.
Has it been awarded?
Not till.
Till we approve.
Correct.
How long did it take when we ordered the one in the South Center? How long did it take?
Three months. Three months.
Three months.
Not without the COVID.
It's all right. It was pre-COVID.
The other one will not be, the other one won't be removed until the other one is in the driveway.
Right. This is in the site. I have a friend in the pool business and rather hell of a time getting equipment from the US.
Anything, wood stoves.
Wood stoves.
Untie pool, pool motors, all that. And these are, this is stuff in Canada, on boats.
It's take, uh, how long were they installed? A week, I think, or a week, I would put in after we were at that time?
Yeah, it was about a week, I don't remember yet.
Are we waiting for Mel to look up that?
Yeah.
Um, can I ask another question then while we?
Yes.
So, um, and I know we've discussed this before and it and it drives me, um, a little bit batty. And and I I think I know the answer before, but I want to bring it up again. And and in the in the fire budget, there was seven K for plowing services. And then in Cardinal Arena, there's another six K for plowing uh, services included as well. And, you know, between the two, that's, you know, thirteen thousand. And I struggle every time when I see those numbers, they pay those other contract services uh, to somebody else when I think we can be doing, uh, we can, you know, there has to be a way, um, uh, with with what we've got, or or we can invest at least in something that we can do that ourselves. I'm still struggling with those.
We have six thousand Spencer Arena as well.
I didn't see the Spencerville one, and I have that as another another cost, but I couldn't find it anywhere. So.
It's in there.
Is it in there? I just I just I must have missed it then. So I I just I struggle with those costs. Not sort of the solution, but I I struggle with the.
So is that twenty thousand dollars a year for snowplow?
Yeah.
Between the three?
We look at our bills for
Nineteen.
For, you know, plowing every month from here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Change twelve thousand bill every month.
Yeah, I have that. I have a struggle with that labor everywhere though.
Mr. Chair, I think I I think if you ask the treasurer, I think she probably has that number now.
Yes, actually, through the chair, um, the, uh, twenty, the thirty-first, uh, December thirty-first balance of the hydro reserve is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven sixty-four and seventy-six cents.
The lower limit for that reserve?
Uh, the policy, the policy itself doesn't really talk about, um, an upper or lower limit in the hydro reserve. It just talks about specifically, um, that it needs to be used for within the village of Cardinal. Uh, for for items within the village of Cardinal. But we don't, typically, what happens with that particular reserve is we don't contribute to that. It's, uh, coming from the Rito St. Lawrence dividends and interest payments that we got, um, that we get annually and then interest bearing in the account.
Uh, point point of information, if I can, my understanding that just the dividend goes in there, that the interest goes to general operating.
No, no, the, uh, interest and dividend go into the hydro reserve as per policy.
Okay, but there was no twenty twenty dividend?
There was no twenty twenty dividend, correct.
And was there interest in twenty twenty?
There was in quarterly interest payments on the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, receivable that we have set up. And then we have interest that's bearing on the account that the money is sitting in.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
There is the quarterly interest payments from Rito St. Lawrence on the loan that we have, the the, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, um, loan is, uh, goes into that account as well as it does bear interest in the account that it that the funds are sitting in.
Run that by me again. I I thought the interest payment came to us as a direct payment.
We we get four quarterly payments of interest from RSL annually.
Yep.
That goes into this account. And then this account bears interest in RBC on a monthly basis.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, 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 yeah. So the five, six, nine, zero, eighty-eight. Is that is that all for payments from twenty twenty interest?
It has, uh, some of the interest is shown in the in the transfers in the forty-one eighty-five and then and and then the other is a mix of the interest uh, recorded in there as well as the interest that's earned in the account.
Thank you.
The two lines is basically interest.
Okay, thank you. Okay, folks, where are we here?
Yeah, so if for me, I'm I'm like, I would support Counselor, um, Dilavat's idea of, of, um, using that hydro fund for the Zamboni and and for the pool. Get it out of get it out of taxation.
Now, now, remember that that fund, what that fund was set up for, and we did not receive a dividend this year. Um, I I am, I I support, uh, deputy mayor as to use some of that money. If we're going to use ninety thousand of it, it's going to reduce that down to about thirty, just over thirty thousand, forty thousand. So I'd like to. So I'd like to, I, I don't mind going the fifty or the forty, or the, or the forty-three.
You know, I do both.
I just don't want to do both. And that's, that's, of course, I'm one person at the table.
Need some more comments and some other discussion?
Too, just to follow, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that. The reserve, the reserve was really not set up for that type of, of usage. It was, it was originally set up for the usage of the citizens of Cardinal, not necessarily the whole township. So that, however, in, in the past, that has been watered down considerably. But like I say, I would certainly support up to fifty thousand.
Basically, what's happening if you use it is the citizens of Cardinal are paying for either the pool or the.
Correct.
Or the, or the Zamboni, one or the other.
Well, one or the other, yeah.
Or both.
So, and, and in the past, they have paid for the stairs and the pool from the fund, but they have.
Very, yeah, very little. Yeah, they're, yeah, 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 they have. But up to that point, pretty much no.
Okay, need some further discussion here? I'm hearing any discussion?
I just, I just, I've been in a lot of funds a long time ago.
Go ahead.
Continue.
Should, should have, should have never been set up in that process anyway. It was supposed to be used for the. Pressurings, it was only the village of Cardinal, but people lived in Cardinal could use that fund. It should have been rolled in, rolled into the reserve for the water and sewer. Just become part of their reserves, not a supplement at all. I don't think it should have ever been established in the first place because when the townships and now, now they made it. I think for Card- Cardinal. Pour all kinds of money into the industrial park and everything else and it's paid for a lot of roadwork and stuff in Cardinal all the time. Ever since, I don't know how they ever agreed to set up a separate fund for, for something that they had at the time. And then it's very donated all their funds they had towards it, so.
Well, it was an asset, well, it was owned by the, the corporation of the village of Cardinal.
Cardinal was an asset owned by the corporation of township Edgersburg.
Yeah, I mean, we can put out this.
Yeah.
All night long, and we're one.
That's what I'm saying, if it was going to be there, it should have just been put into water and sewer.
Well, now, now we're one, you know, united township, I mean.
Okay, chairs looking for direction here, where do you want to go, folks?
I'd support.
It's nine, nine twenty-five, I'd like to end the meeting at nine-thirty.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for support for the fifty and the forty-three. So, so the total of, of ninety-three-five to come out of the Cardinal Hydro Fund.
That's what you want, I'll support it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to take the ninety-three-five out of the Cardinal Hydro Fund to pay for both the Zamboni and the filter. Cardinal pool filter, Cardinal pool filters. Motion on the floor, it seems to be moved and seconded. Discussion if any?
Well, my, my discussion is a maximum fifty.
You'll win your choices to vote against the motion.
Certainly yes.
I'm gonna call a question on the motion and I'm gonna call for a recorded vote. Uh, so. I have to, just give me a second, please. And so, and so, and so, so, Counselor Dilavah, how do you vote?
I'd, I'd like to.
The motion on the floor is for ninety-three-five. I'm in. Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
Nay.
Sale votes nay. Counselor, Mr. Deputy Mayor Deschamp, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Mr. Bradley, how do you vote? May I pardon?
Yay.
All right, motion carries, it's four to two. And chairs moving on, I don't know that there are any other issues here at this point. And so now I'm on page thirty-seven, which is the draft capital, if I'm, if I'm in the right place, draft capital funding analysis. And there's a number of issues brought forward here. And. Trying to look to see what the main ones are. Number two, on page thirty-seven of thirty-nine, the draft budget is a hundred and twenty estimated to complete the paving on Charles and David. After the drainage work has been completed, based on past construction projects of this magnitude, Walker or James, the paving may not take place in twenty-twenty-one. Committee could consider putting half of the proposed budget into reserve and reduce the overall taxation support in twenty-twenty-one by sixty thousand. The grant funding could be relocated to another paving project. One suggestion. Spencerville, that's one suggestion, I'd like to have some discussion on that suggestion.
I need to be worked on in Spencerville this year. I wouldn't just doing some engineering work on it, so. You know, we need to be up to a whole three hundred thousand, but I think it definitely needs to be.
It's a hundred and twenty for paving.
Yeah.
Has, has the, has the engineering been done?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, if you recall, at the last budget meeting, we, we sought pretty much approval to get the engineering started on that project.
Okay, has that been awarded?
That has been notified to, to Greer Galloway pending the, the, the minutes of, of council on the twenty-second.
Okay, now, did Greer, Greer Galloway give any idea as to when the engineering design and, and when the engineering design would be complete in the tender documents, ready?
Uh, I do, I, I do not have an exact timeline as, as, as of right now.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, moving on, Spencerville Drainage. The draft budget is three hundred thousand estimate to conduct engineering and drainage work in the Charles Cedar and David Street area. At budget number four, committee, at budget number four, committee passed the recommendation that council give pre-budget approval to undertake engineering design and begin phase one. And that, you just heard the CIO indicate that that's been done. Now, that was engineering design and begin phase one of the Spencerville Drainage Project to an upset limit of a hundred and fifty thousand in twenty-twenty-one. Now, I guess the previous hundred and twenty is on top of that hundred and fifty. Because you can't do the paving till the rest of it's been done. Staff estimate that the project could take two years to complete, that's a staff estimate. Committee could consider transferring additional fifty thousand of the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget into reserve to help fund phase two in twenty-twenty-two and reduce the overall taxation support in twenty-twenty-one by additional one hundred thousand. Chairs looking for discussion?
How much work are you planning on getting done, just paperwork?
So, so through, through the chair, no, the, the, certainly the hope would be able to get the, the, the engineering design complete, the project tendered and as, as much work as possible done in, in twenty-twenty-one. But I'm anticipating that there'll still be some, some drainage work and then the final paving that, that'll take place in twenty-twenty-two. That's, that, that, that's why we wouldn't get staggered in that project. I, ideally, I, I, I don't anticipate that we would be ready to, to, for council award until June or July.
What would we be awarding?
Sorry?
What, what work would we be awarding to get done?
My, 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 my estimation is that we would, that, that we would tender for, for award of the complete project to be completed. Very similar to Walker or James Street. And then we, we'll, we'll have our budget numbers and we'll know leading in what, what we're going to need to, to offset that. And you will recall that as of right now, like in twenty-twenty, we did take a hundred and seventy thousand into reserves to, to offset that taxation. We haven't, the only thing as of right now that we were taking until the last decision was thirty thousand from reserves. So there is some room there that if we get further along in that project, we may just have to supplement from, 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 from reserves. But it was given an opportunity for, for, you know, a reduction from what we started out at, at five-point-three percent down to a, to, to, to that range where our, our feeling was that, that, that council was comfortable with a, with a two to two-point-five percent. And, and that's where we, we were, we, we were trying to originally land without taking a number of projects out, out of the equation, just.
Basically, the people that are going to see something being.
We, we, we need, we, we, we need, we, we need to show, my, my personal opinion is that, yes, we, we, we need to show some work being done. And we did have a meeting with South Nation yesterday with respect to, to opportunities for potential grants along with the, these projects. So there, 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 there may be opportunity there.
I know they're applying for grants, but whether they get them or not.
Correct.
All right, that's what we can do, we can't spend all in one year. I think we've, we've got to show we're doing some work here in Spencerville. We're continuously paving streets and, and doing drainage work and stuff in Cardinal over the last three years. And there's been nothing done in Spencerville here in twenty years, so. Time, something gets done here.
Agreed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking for direction here.
Recommendation?
I don't have a recommendation, I just have some suggestions here, I want somebody to bring it forward here.
I think they're the recommendations. I gotta go with staff, we gotta keep our budget within range. We've removed money from reserves to get us down to. There's, and let's get this the rest of the way to two-point something.
So, so, so that would be two-point-six before the, before the ninety-three thousand additional, so. I, I'm not sure where that would put you, but you would put, it would certainly put you under the two.
Yeah, that puts it to not taking money out of reserves or just project and go further if money to.
Correct.
So what amount goes into the proposed reserve for next year, please?
Thousand, is it, is that in here?
Committee could consider putting half of the proposed budget into reserve and reduce the overall taxation support in twenty-twenty-one by sixty thousand. So the, the proposal is that sixty thousand be transferred from the paving budget to the reserve for paving next year. That's the way I read that.
That is correct.
Chairs looking for direction, not hearing any?
I'd like, I'm gonna go with the staff.
Counselor Hunter, moving, does he have a second? Counselor Deschamp seconding, further discussion if any?
How much are we putting in?
Sixty. About to call a question, those in favor?
Yes.
Motion is carried. That was the first part of it, the second part of it is Spencerville Drainage. The draft budget has three hundred thousand estimated to conduct engineering and drainage work in Charles and David Street. At budget number four, committee passed the recommendation. The council give pre-budget approval to undertake engineering design and begin phase one of the Spencerville Drainage Project to an upset limit of a hundred and fifty. Staff estimate the project could take two years to complete. Committee could consider transferring an additional, an additional fifty thousand of the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget into reserve to help fund phase two in twenty-twenty-two and reduce the overall taxation support in twenty-one by an additional hundred thousand. Well, I wouldn't reduce it by, if we transferred an additional fifty, uh, maybe the treasurer can explain how it reduces overall taxation. Oh, I see, because it's probably a grant component, is there a grant component that would come in there?
No, so through the chair, the budget is three hundred.
Oh, yes.
Committee, committee has, has given pre-budget approval for a hundred and fifty. So we're down to a hundred and fifty is the, is the amount that we're looking at. Instead of budgeting for that hundred and fifty, we're only going to budget for fifty, which removes a hundred thousand out of the budget.
Good, got you. All right, looking for a motion to action now?
I'd move it.
Moved by Counselor Hunter, does he have a second or?
I'll second that.
Say, for Counselor Dilavah, further discussion if any? Hearing done, those in favor?
Yea.
Carried. Uh, okay, so the last paragraph is, oh wait a minute, one more thing here. Yeah, one more paragraph. And that's the second paragraph at the top, page thirty-eight, the pre-budget balance. The pre-audit balance as of December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty, in the Storm Sewer Reserve is eighty-four thousand, four ninety-nine. And the draft budget proposes a transfer of fifteen thousand into the reserve. Now, unless I hear to the contrary, that will remain. Do I get a nodding of heads that that remains? I have consensus that that remains. All right, now, after budget, okay, so I think this is just a wind-up paragraph. After budget number four, revisions, the overall twenty-twenty-one draft budget deficit is. What am I hearing? So the draft budget deficit is three sixteen, zero seventy-nine. Which he quotes da-da-da, if committee agrees to suggest changes above, the overall agree decrease to taxation-supported revenue is a hundred and sixty-two five. Would reduce the budget deficit to a hundred and fifty-three, seven, five seventy-nine. So maybe the treasurer can help me. When we started the discussion, we were at a draft budget deficit of three sixteen, zero seventy-nine. My understanding is that we took forty-nine, five from the previous discuss, from the hydro reserve account, is that correct?
Uh, I believe the motion said ninety-three-five.
Ninety-three-five? All right, so the ninety-three-five comes off the three sixteen, am I correct with that?
Correct.
All right, so nine, that's a two, that's a two. So now I'm at two twenty-three, five seventy-nine. And then when we took, uh, the first motion transferred sixty thousand out of that budget, is that correct?
Correct.
So the sixty comes out of that, two seventy-three. Seventy-nine, three, and that's a six, I'm at one sixty-three, five seventy-nine. And then we took another fifty out?
No.
No?
No, we put fifty into reserve, we took out a hundred.
Oh, we took out a hundred, okay. So does that leave us then at sixty-three, five seventy-nine?
Eighty thousand seventy-nine.
Say again?
I, 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 I have a, I, I have a deficit remaining of sixty thousand seventy-nine.
Yeah, that's, that's including the media cha, the change for the media system.
Correct.
Including what?
Media. Item number one, which is just a reduction of twenty-five hundred dollars, we have, we have five thousand in the budget, but we.
Okay, and then there's the truck.
Yeah, so the truck is still the one outstanding that we'll have to return.
Okay.
Can I ask one question before we go? I know you want to move on, but I just want to ask one question just so that I, is that okay? In, in the item, it's back into the fire one, we, we put thirty K into the building repair budget. I know nobody wants to go back to that, but is it, is it possible, uh, because we have seventy three in there, we're moving towards one forty as, as that balance. Is it, is it possible to reduce or do we have to put in the thirty K? Can we cut that thirty K into half and put fifteen in, still move towards our ultimate goal of one forty and reduce it by another fifteen thousand? Why are we going back over this? Well, I wanted to ask it then. We just moved on.
So I, I think, I, I think the low limit is one forty, so we haven't even reached our low limit. Yeah, so yes, we, 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 that, that needs to go in.
Okay. I'll ask good.
Okay, so that pretty much completes this then, if I thought it's correct. Okay, so that ends that, uh, as I see it. I'm at item number seven on the agenda, which is inquiries and notices of motion. Are there any inquiries and notices of motion? And there will be no errors reported. Uh, question, uh, item number nine is a question period. There's nobody here to make any questions. So to the treasurer, to the clerk, if the clerk is still with us, is there anything, uh, from the public at all at this point?
No, I have not received anything.
Okay, and, uh, I'm gonna ask that we, uh, dispense with the closed session. Uh, I'd like to, uh, end this meeting at this point, if it's possible. You've been rather lengthy here. So unless I hear a motion to go into a closed session, I'm gonna be looking for the motion to adjourn. I don't hear a motion coming forward to go into a closed session. Okay, I'm looking for the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved on myself and seconded by councillor Dillabah. That committee is now adjourned at nine forty two P M.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.